Yes, I'm here.
Are we, are we good for Quorum?
Uh, hold on, uh, Mike, um, hold on one second for me, please. I apologize. I'm sure you're okay for Quorum, Mike. Excuse me, Ken.
That's okay. All right, so, uh, that said, I'd like to call to order regular meeting thirteen forty-four of the Wachusett Regional School District Committee. We're operating under, um, the revised open meeting law rules as set forth by Governor Charlie Baker. This meeting is being broadcast live and streaming live, and you are being recorded. So our first item is public hearing. I'm gonna put the, uh, public hearing off until, um, after our discussion of the report. And if everybody can be on mute, we're getting a good bit of feedback. Let's see one second. So, all right, um, and we'll come back to that. I do have one person who has sent me an email. Let me just post the email for, uh, for questions. So as you listen, if you have questions, it is questions@wrst.net. So questions@wrst.net, and that just bounces to my email, and I will read them, uh, after the discussion of the superintendent's report. All right, so the first, next item on the agenda is the chair's opening remarks. So, first off, you know, we, I hope everyone is, is, is well, and, uh, best wishes to everyone in our community as we face this, as we face this challenge together. Tonight, we have some, some tough conversations to have, and, and, uh, it's really gonna be, I think, a two-meeting conversation. And, um, you know, tonight, I really want us to spend some time talking about the document that, uh, the superintendent McCall included in his, his call to meeting, with regards to certain tiers of potential reductions. Now, you know, that said, we don't wanna make reductions. We hope that circumstances improve in which as few as those tiers, uh, are possible, and we're gonna discuss tonight, under a recommendation requiring action by the school committee, a, um, an advocacy motion to our, uh, our federal legislators, a couple of whom, um, would have sent reps tonight, but they were unable to make it. Uh, but we have to, you know, advocate for the best, but plan for the worst. And as we do so, um, tonight, I want us to have a serious, focused conversation that gives the administration direction. At the end of the day, it's the administration's responsibility to be, you know, managing personnel. At the same time, there's things beyond that that deal with curriculum that, that we should be giving feedback on. Questions about, you know, if we need to make reductions, are we prioritizing class size? Are we priory- prioritizing programs? What are the per- what are our priorities, um, if we're faced with cuts? Again, hopefully, it's if, but if, what are our priorities? So we've had that conversation. I think, remember, Ember and I are the only two who have been on the committee where we actually had to do real cuts, you know, not just cuts of what we hoped our budget would be, but actual cuts. And they're painful, and they're difficult, and they're not good for kids, they're not good for staff. There are certain things that have always, they come up quickly, athletics, arts, foreign language at the middle school level, pro- program things, there's, um, of course, class has implications for everything. Um, and frankly, we won't really know what to do until we know more about contingency. So tonight, hopefully, the superintendent and his report will tell us about the staffing of his contingency planning committee. Uh, the, um, Commissioner of Education released his committee today, um, as well, and announced the membership of, of that committee. And, you know, frankly, we don't know what decisions we should be making until A, we really have a budget, and B, um, we know what the school year looks like, because if we're in buildings or if we're online, what our staffing needs look like would probably be different. But today, tonight, we need to have some of those difficult, um, those difficult conversations. At our next meeting, I'm gonna hope that Business and Finance will preview a couple of motions, one about, um, using E and D, and one about, um, authorizing the superintendent's authority to issue pink slips where needed. Um, we'll have to have those conversations in our next meeting, um, but those will be things that will come, uh, at our, our next meeting, two weeks from, from yesterday. The other thing we, uh, need to be thinking about is that town elections are soon. So if people are listening, you know, you can get mail-in ballots if you feel uncomfortable, um, going to your town elections. They are available. Um, so get them. A number of them, you will find empty seats on the school committee, um, that, uh, it holds, and for instance, only one name on a ballot for four spots. I know other towns are in similar positions. Um, so if members of our committee are interested in being written in, um, please make that public through whatever means you can. If people from the community are interested in being on this, I'm happy to talk to anyone about what it's like to be on the school committee, and, uh, I'll tell you mostly the truth, so you run. And, um, and, uh, but I can give you a sense of time commitment for that, too, so feel free to reach out to me about that. Um, you should also, if you're interested in running as a writing candidate, you should reach out to your town clerk. Uh, town clerks usually have a preference about how, um, write-ins are handled in terms of if it should be a sticker, if it should be written in, what sort of address you need. Um, so please reach out to your, your respective town clerk, um, for information about becoming a writing candidate. Those of us who have our, our written ballots in our hands right now would wanna write things into them, and as soon as people express interest, will people be able to actually write themselves, uh, people, uh, write names down. So, uh, we really can't afford to have a small committee going forward. We need fifteen votes regardless of the size of the committee to pass a budget. So if we were gonna pass a budget in July, the Senate of the towns that's revised, we need fifteen votes on the committee. So we need actually fifteen people on the committee, too. Um, so, and, uh, the way it is right now, that, that may not happen unless people, um, run writing campaigns. So that said, um, I wanna give the rest of my chair's opening remarks time to any, um, I, I know, uh, Senator Goby is on the line, and Representative Ferguson has a, a personal matter this evening, uh, to attend to. Um, but, uh, Senator Goby, did you wish to, to add anything? Uh, Anne, you're on mute.
There we go.
Okay.
Um, yeah, thanks, Ken, and yes, uh, unfortunately, uh, Kim's uncle had passed away, so, um, they were having, um, calling hours out in Marlboro, and the way that they have to do that kinda spaced out. So unfortunately, she wasn't able to join in. I don't know if Ken, if you received, I had just kinda called before I came on to, from Jim Cantwell, from Senator Markey's office, and just, um, saying that they, sorry that they weren't able to participate tonight. But his big message was that they're hopeful that, um, that the next, the next package that comes out, what they're trying to really push, is to make sure that there are not those strings attached that that first CARES package had, because it made it very difficult for municipalities and schools to access funds. Uh, all I was going to say on the, on the state side, we're looking to do a one billion dollar supplemental budget. What that would be based on is that we're looking to do things that we would get full reimbursement from the feds through FEMA funding. And what, um, the conversations that I've had with, uh, Senate Ways and Means is that, um, that would be something that would not have those strings attached to it, uh, as the, uh, CARES funding did. Um, one thing that I would just suggest, and I'm sure that you're already doing this, that really keep a record of any of the kind of extreme expenses that you've incurred because of COVID. That is extremely important to really make sure that, that we have a good sense of how much each district is, is spending, each municipality is spending, because those are the kind of things that we're hoping to get complete reimbursement for. Um, unfortunately, again, that, we weren't able to do that under that first set of funding through CARES. So, um, I don't really have a whole lot to, to, um, pass on this evening. We were hoping that a- at this time, that we would have a better idea what was going on with the feds, and to see if that, um, was moving along. And obviously, that's kind of stalled a bit, um, as it makes its way into the Senate. Senator Markey's office did say, you know, they'll, they'll obviously get in touch with us as soon as they have more information. They do keep, I can tell you this, they do keep in regular contact, as does Niana in, uh, Senator Warren's office as well. And of course, um, Jim McGovern has been very good. I know that he's going to be on a call Friday with the Mass Association of Regional Schools. And so maybe, maybe by Friday, fingers crossed, we'll have, um, some better things to pass on. But, um, that's really all I have right now. I don't know if anyone has anything for me to, um, to kinda take back, but that's what I have, and as soon as we know more, obviously, we'll pass it on.
Yeah, I signed up for that, um, meeting with, um, Congressman McGovern, and I encourage other members of the school committee and the administration to do, to do the same. And Niana also did reach out to me from Senator Warren's office, you know, expressing her regret not being able to make it, uh, this evening.
Right, yeah.
Member Haynes asked if there's any hint if Governor Baker will tap into the stabilization fund, I assume, the rainy day fund.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, we have a little over three billion dollars in that rainy day fund. There's no question that that will have to be tapped into, because we're over a five billion dollar deficit. Uh, it's just to the extent of how much, um, and when that, and when that happens. There's no question that that's going to have to get tapped into.
Of course, we can also borrow money if we have money in reserve, right? Um, member gets some asked if we have any update on the question of how, oops, disappeared on me, on how, um, regional school district transportation will be calculated. I think that means if we have less expenses this year, yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we are still waiting for a little bit more guidance from DESI on that, because that has come up over and over again. And, um, it, it, it gets a little frustrating, uh, so hopefully, we'll get some guidance very soon from them on that. Um, they just have not been really forthcoming.
Well, thank you so much, Senator Goby.
All right.
All right.
Okay, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care, bye-bye.
Um, so next item, so just at the end of Chair's opening remarks, just to, again, set out, our, our meeting, we'll have student representative talks, we'll do superintendent's report, and then we will, um, uh, go back to do public hearing. Um, some of the items under the recommendations requiring action by the school committee were likely to pass over. Um, so we'll get to that as, as, as we get there. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is the student representatives' reports. So I saw that Leah was online. I didn't notice if Rihanna was online as well. Um, do either of you have anything to report?
Yes, I have a little bit. So on Friday, uh, the senior class was able to go to the school and drop off Chromebooks, textbooks, Chromebook chargers, any other school items, and then pick up our caps and gowns. Any, um, outstanding payments could be made as well. I also believe, uh, we got our medical records, and that, um, went very successful, uh, from what I heard. I wanna give a huge thank you to all of the staff that made that possible. I know it was probably crazy to put together, to have five hundred students come, uh, to the school to drop stuff off and pick stuff up, and, oh, and as well, students could clean out their gym walkers. Um, so a huge thank you, uh, goes out to everyone that made that possible. And also, um, the seniors have their last official day of school on Friday, so most of us are done. There's a few of us who still have, um, some AP exams makeup, but most of us finished up Friday.
Congratulations. Did you have anything to, to add?
I don't have anything else to add. That's pretty much it. A lot of senior class updates, but I think most things have stayed the same.
Well, well, you're, of course, welcome to come to our meeting a week from yesterday, uh, two weeks from yesterday for our, our next meeting. I do wanna thank you both so much for your service to the committee. Um, you've both been wonderful representatives through the most challenging of times, and, and early in the year, the efforts you put into getting impact, input from the middle schools throughout the district was, is also a great, um, uh, a great service that you all provided. And, um, member Christian Baum says thank you in the, in the comments as well.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us.
And, uh, good luck next year. Hopefully, you are away and not doing classes in your room, but, uh, I guess that will be seen. All right, so next item, uh, member Haynes also thanks Leah and Rihanna, saying that you guys do a great job. Um, so next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, so I'm gonna give the superintendent an opportunity to, um, present the report, hopefully also a bit of context for the, the document that I discussed under Chair's, um, opening remarks, um, that I may give, member Dennis, just so he knows, a bit of an opportunity to give some context framing from uh, Business and Finance, and then we'll go around the table for, uh, for comments. So, Darrell?
Sure, thank you, Ken. Um, you know, and I'd also like to reiterate, yeah, thank you to Leah and Rihanna, uh, for doing a great job this year, um, under extreme circumstances. Um, and again, I, I had the opportunity to be up at the high school Friday morning, uh, when kids were coming through, cleaning out their lockers, uh, dropping off their Chromebooks, um, getting their caps and gowns. Um, and kudos to, um, the staff at the high school. A lot of teachers up there, tech department, um, virtual Beando, uh, assistant principal Pratt were out there. Um, you know, hoping to make sure that everything was smooth and, uh, worked out well, so it was, it was really impressive. It was sad, um, at the same time, seeing the kids, you know, coming out, you know, waving to, you know, everybody, um, you know, not a time for hugs, um, more of a time for, you know, a wave from afar, but, um, you know, I, I think, I think this is, has been a, a challenging time for all, and I appreciate what both Leah and Rihanna have done over the past, you know, several months, um, going all the way back to, um, you know, earlier in the school year, so, so thank you all. Um, I did wanna talk to you about a couple different items that were in my, um, report, so, um, I'll, I'll go through quickly, um, pulling up a couple of the items. One of the things that, um, you know, I spoke, uh, about in my report, um, around, uh, the COVID nineteen updates, really come back to, uh, some of the things that, um, Senator Goby referred to. So, um, we're, we're still awaiting some guidance from, from DESI around several different items. And again, I, I do not blame them. They are, we know how short-staffed they are typically. So, um, when they are under duress, which they are, which we all are, but, um, they, they are, um, more so, I think, um, than typical. Uh, you know, it, it does take time, and they have so many constituents that they're dealing with in, in terms of coming up with decisions. So, um, again, we have a conference call, um, this week with the commissioner. Um, I am, I've already registered for, uh, the call on Friday, um, you know, through MASC. Um, so that, that'll be another time, uh, when we can hear more about what's going on at the federal level. Um, I do know that the, the likelihood of there being some more federal stimulus money, I think, is pretty high right now. Um, it looks like Mitch McConnell has already said that there will be some type of, some type of plan associated with a bill, um, with, uh, you know, supporting towns and municipalities and states and so forth, local governments. Uh, but we're, we're just not sure what it's going to look like. I do not think it will look like what was passed, uh, by the House. I think it's probably going to be a mixture, um, but it will help us, um, dramatically. Uh, one of the things that I have been kind of reviewing of the past several days is just the amount of literature that's coming out there around, the state of school districts throughout the country, and how we're all in a very similar situation. And, um, if there is not a, a true infusion of funds from the federal level, um, we could be, um, all the strides have been made since two thousand and eight, could easily be just blown away with, you know, one fell swoop in terms of, um, what happens with reductions to staff, to, um, technology, to textbooks and so forth. So those are all items that, you know, I'm focusing intently on. Uh, Chair Mills has, uh, a letter that, uh, he wrote with, um, member Ember, uh, that I reviewed, that I think you'll be talking about this evening. Um, you know, also, in reference to some of the things that we talked about, I had the opportunity, and, uh, Chair Mills mentioned this, I had the opportunity to, um, attend the Business and Finance meeting the other night, where, uh, we shared a tiered, kind of plan of action in terms of looking at what we might do, uh, in reference to reductions. So, um, Chair Mills, would you like me to talk through that, or would you like me to wait until we go into, uh, Business and Finance?
I think we should look at it now. Um, can you share it, or do you need me to share it?
Yeah, if you could share it, that would.
Sure, let me just, uh, get that up. All right, let me. Let me get this here. So am I, am I sharing, uh?
That's it, yeah.
The correct document, okay.
Thank you so much. So what, um, what Chair Mills has shared with you is a document that, um, was prepared, um, over the past few weeks that we shared with Business and Finance last week, um, and it basically is a, a plan of action in order to look at what we might possibly do in reference to reductions in order to meet our, uh, budgetary requirements moving forward uh, for FY twenty-one. So, um, on that first page, and this is, uh, attachment three in your, um, it's actually all part of the same, uh, attachment, but it's attachment six, excuse me. Um, page nine, and, um, you know, what you'll see there are, um, kind of the, the timeline from which we, um, we, we moved forward with our, um, principals, uh, you know, meeting with, uh, all the principals individually, as small groups, and, um, uh, at the elementary, middle, and ultimately, high school level. Um, and again, one of the things we wanted to do was ensure that we were, um, you know, looking at all options possible in reference to what we might reduce before we actually got to the point where we're reducing people, uh, which was, you know, one of the tasks that was put forth by Business and Finance for administration, um, when we talked about this, um, probably three or four weeks ago now. So Ken, if you can scroll down. So what, what we did was, we broke this up into, um, several tiers, and, uh, tier one is basically, um, items that are not related back to people, um, with the exception of, uh, the new positions and benefits. So, uh, what you'll see there are textbook reductions, operations and maintenance, um, the positions, um, the use of excess and deficiency, uh, which Chair Mills mentioned, we will talk about at our next Business and Finance meeting. Um, carry-forward money from FY twenty into twenty-one, uh, from school choice and circuit breaker, and then some other savings that, um, we're planning on through contracted service transportation and summer school. So, um, by the time we're, you know, done with that, you know, we have a one-twelfth budget reduction goal of four point two million dollars. If we look at the bottom line there, we have about, we're down to about two point, um, six million dollars altogether. So that still leaves us, uh, with about one point six million dollars, and this is just to get to one-twelfth. And again, one-twelfth is the difference between FY twenty and what was proposed for FY twenty-one. Um, we will be on a one-twelfth budget as of July first, uh, when we, um, you know, because there will not be a state budget at that time, and, uh, the, the towns will not have the capacity to kind of support a budget, you know, moving forward until we know what, what funds are going to be allocated, uh, through the state. The next tier is tier two, and, uh, that's where we had to go back in and look at actual positions. So we broke it up into pre-K eight, high school, and then central office. So by breaking it up like that, um, you can see that we have, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a loss all the way across the board in terms of teaching staff, paraprofessionals, custodians, secretaries, um, also, middle school athletics is in there, and, um, administration. So, um, by taking those positions, uh, it basically reduces it, um, down to, um, two point one million dollars. So Ken, if you can scroll down a little bit further? So it's a little bit more than what, um, it, than the actual difference, uh, in terms of the overall amount, so it's actually above by about five hundred thousand dollars, which, um, is what we wanted to do, um, in case we had to look at, um, you know, excess and deficiency a little differently, or some of the other items, um, in tier one. So, moving down from there, the other thing that we did was, we looked at the overall, um, budget based upon a twenty percent reduction in chapter seventy-eight. Now, ten million dollars is really the total amount, so it's basically six million dollars for, uh, the reduction in aid, and then the four million dollars, which is the difference between FY twenty and twenty-one that we dealt with in, uh, tier one and tier two. So ten million is probably a pretty far outlier in terms of, uh, a total dollar amount, but, you know, we wanted to just be able to, um, perform this exercise so that we could actually go through and take a look at what, what would actually happen, uh, in reference to, you know, not only staffing, but, um, you know, the items that we need to help educate kids in our district. So tier three, again, we have more teachers, uh, at all levels. We have paraprofessionals, we have custodians, we have, um, our clubs, we actually have high school athletics in there. Um, we have more administrators through central office. Um, so, you know, in total, uh, it's another two point two million dollars. So you can look down at the bottom of page three, we have our total tier one, tier two, and tier three reductions, um, and we're still about three million dollars, uh, to go. So Ken, if you can scroll down, please. And these are, uh, the last two tiers, uh, tier four and tier five. Tier four goes back in and takes, um, more money out of, uh, transportation, uh, takes more money out of special ed tuitions, instructional support, operations and maintenance. So there's, uh, another, you know, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, give or take there. And then tier five, that's our, our final tier where we just kind of go back in, and it's a, you know, it's a, a challenging, um, exercise, to say the least, um, to go through and attempt to, um, make these types of reductions. So, you, you'll note more teaching staff, more paraprofessionals, uh, almost all of our assistant principals, um, almost wiping out central office administration, um, completely. And, um, you know, again, that, that two point three million dollars gives us about that ten million dollar, um, number that, that we were looking for in reference to, uh, that twenty percent number. Probably won't be ten, um, you know, that, that's a kind of a, a long shot number, but at the same time, we wanted to ensure that we were kind of showing what it would, what would actually happen to the district if, um, you know, we were presented with this type of budget and, uh, this type of, uh, situation moving forward. So I just wanted to review that with everyone, um, this evening, and I'm sure that, um, member Dennis will talk more about that during Business and Finance. Thank you, Ken.
Sure, and in terms of, of process and some questions, the, time-wise, we need next meeting to vote on E and D, we need, which is kind of complicated. We can talk about the, the method of doing that at Business and Finance. And we need to talk about voting for, for pink slips, because there is a June fifteenth deadline, uh, for the superintendent to issue pink slips to non-professional status, um, staff. Doesn't mean that they wouldn't be brought back, um, but there is that deadline for him to do that. And as we add positions, we should also be authorizing him to remove them, because that's, you know, our, our responsibility, which positions are his, you know, um, responsibility. Um, some of the numbers on there, before people ask, you know, it looks like there's less of a savings than we're cutting. That's largely due to unemployment insurance, um, expenses. So, um, is there anything else in the report, Darrell, or is this your?
Uh, that, that was, that's really been the,
Yeah.
I'm not gonna call it a highlight, but, um, that's been the, the focus of, you know, our attention in my office for the past, uh, several weeks. And, you know, as we, as we look at what we, we need to do moving forward, I think we're going to have to get down into more detail, um, you know, especially in those fur- further tiers, uh, moving forward.
Uh, before I turn it over to Mike, and then we can go around the table for questions, um, I guess I've lost my train of thought. Um, oh, yes, the contingency group. Did you have anything to say about appointing a contingency group, the committee? That will be appointed?
Oh, that, that, uh, subcommittee that will be, uh, the advisory, yes, so, um, yes, um, Director Keenan is, has been organizing that. It's a pretty large group right now. Um, gosh, Brendan kind of reviewed it with me, uh, today, and, um, the plan is to have, uh, first meeting next week. Um, he has the specific data. I don't have it right off the top of my head, but, um, you know, again, this aligns with what's happening at the state level right now. Um, you know, again, what we wanna do is look at information that's coming out from the state, and then we can use it to, um, kind of better adapt what we might be doing, um, into, into the fall. Um, there, there is an awful lot of, um, balls up in the air in terms of kind of figuring out what summer might look like, um, in terms of, um, some type of support program for kids, uh, if, if funds are available from the federal government, uh, how we might, um, bring kids back into school, uh, in the fall. Um, you know, uh, I was speaking with a member a little earlier today about colleges, and, um, many colleges and universities are making a decision to bring students back, uh, to campus. Um, some schools are doing a, a shortened, uh, version of their first semester. Um, other schools are, um, doing a hybrid model where it's, um, you know, some students will be working remotely, some students will be in school. But as we've been looking at what might happen at the, at the K twelve level, um, it's, it's really up in it's, it's really up in the air right now. So we are, we will be working, you know, directly with the state on this as well as, you know, MASC and MASSS, just around, you know, the best processes that we need to kind of go through. And I, I do have to, you know, say that Director Keenan is already kind of, he has a great group of people that he's going to be working with in this, and I'll be involved in this, you know, as well. So it should be, it should be something that helps us move forward.
And if you could share the membership of that committee with the school committee before our next meeting, like not right before, but soon. So we know what's, what's happening there.
Yeah.
So I'm going to turn the floor over to member Dennis, just to maybe recap Business and Finance. I think that gives context to what people want to talk about. And then we'll pick up from there with member Godbout and go alphabetically through our, our listing, winding up with Mike Last for his own comments.
Sure. Thanks, Ken. So, you know, I think to provide just some, some context in what was just reviewed with you by Superintendent McCall. Really, I, I see that as a list of reductions that can be made to achieve a $10 reduction in the total budget from what was originally passed by school committee. That's what the Business and Finance Committee reviewed at our last meeting, you know, which, which reflects about two months' worth of discussions around contingency planning for this exercise. So a $10 million reduction, you know, I think some people may have heard me refer to, or try to use the analogy of, of three separate valves with respect to revenue funding for next year and how we think about that. One being that we restore to fiscal year twenty levels, and, and that certainly accomplishes, as Darrell had mentioned. The second is an assumption of a 20% reduction in state aid, which gets us the, the balance to the $10 million, or roughly $6 million. It's, it's worth noting that back in, in, you know, 2008, there was an overall reduction of 28% in state aid. And there are growing accounts and, you know, quite frankly, it's, it's, the, the picture is, is getting worse, not better. That in many respects, our state funding situation may be quite a bit worse than it was in, in 2008. So I add that for context. The third valve being any kind of appreciation for cash flow restrictions. So we know that, for example, if we were into one twelfth budget and we're limited by spending one twelfth of our budget on a month by month basis, once we get to October and we have three payrolls, that may produce a spike. What hadn't been done at the time of our Business Finance Committee meeting was determining whether or not there is a month in the fall where our balance might go negative and resulting in, in some type of, of shortfall. Keeping in mind, the situation that we don't want to be in, as difficult as these conversations are to have, is, you know, on one hand, we certainly want to be able to strike the balance of, of what we think might happen going forward. But we also don't want to be in a position where we find ourselves opening and need to do further reductions in force. That would have a tremendous impact to, to school, to children, and it's, it's something that, that, that we want to avoid. So we still need to account for that. And, and then, you know, the one thing that I haven't mentioned in our three valves is, and I think this is what was referred to as, as a contingency advisory meeting. I'm not sure if it's contingency or if this is a reopening. But at some point, there needs to be a convergence with the reopening plan for next year. And we would suppose that that reopening plan is not without expense that may not be accounted for in this budget. And, and so that needs to be factored in as well. However, we're at $10 million. And at $10 million in the sheet that was, was presented today, if you were to go through and, and add up a number of, some of the boxes that were presented, it's about 65% in staff reductions, 35% in, in non-staff. That represents a reduction of about 160 FTEs, and I think I counted 67 teachers from across the district. It also accounts for the removal of athletics, both at the middle school and the high school, as well as clubs. Now, one of the key things, and one of the things that was not presented, although it was discussed briefly here and was discussed at Business and Finance, is that there is a 615 deadline for staff reductions, at least for, for teachers. And so there is a time sensitivity to, to this process. In addition, what was not shown but was discussed in Business Finance is that there are, I believe, a number of mitigating activities that can be conducted and should be conducted and happening in the three, roughly less than three weeks that we have before that 615 deadline. And those activities include exploration of athletic fees, transportation fees, negotiation with bargaining units. So that when we get to that 615 deadline, perhaps this reduction may not need to be as great as we are listing out in, in this document today. When we talk about a, a plan, to me, our plan and what we're, I think we're still looking to hear and, and receive updates from the administration on are how this timeline lays out, what these mitigating activities are, whether or not they're bearing fruit. What's the plan for them? Are there meetings? Are there meetings scheduled with collective bargaining units? How are they progressing? And, and how that might factor into the big picture? But the, the log of it, I suppose, is that while we are not likely to have any kind of insight on state revenue numbers before July one, there are some hard decisions that need to happen by June 15th. And that's less than three weeks away. And we have one school committee, our next school committee meeting is about a week before that. So again, can understate the time sensitivity to this? And, and, and I encourage, you know, questions along what you've heard and, and in particular around those activities that are taking place. I mean, at this point, it's on a day by day basis, each and every day, what is it that we're doing to try to mitigate this problem for next year?
All right. So before we go around the table, Darrell, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Just to say that, you know, member Dennis, you know, talked about a few things that we had discussions on at Business and Finance. And, you know, we are in the process of meeting with unions to look at, you know, what we might be able to do to help mitigate the effects of the, the reductions in reference to not only staffing, but what we might not see in terms of funding. And those are happening. So we'd be happy to put together a, a kind of a timeframe and not a timeframe, but a, a number of dates that kind of go along with that. And then is there a deadline contractual? So the deadline really comes down to the June 15th date, remember, Ember? So, and that's MGL. Other than that, it, it, you know, when we're looking at the other contracts, there, there are no, there are no dates associated with notifications.
And this notification only replies, as I understand it, to non-professional staff, teachers. There's different contract language about reductions in force. But as, as Superintendent says, the June 15th deadline is statutory. Okay, member, we'll go around the table. If people can be, you know, succinct, we thank everyone for everything they've done. We don't all have to do it. It's assumed. So we start with member Godbout and we'll go around the table. Member Godbout has no questions. His only comment is he is grateful to the high school administration for putting together such a comprehensive plans to honor the class of 2020 during such challenging times, and believe they have found a balance. Been keeping students and their families safe and celebrating our graduating seniors. All right. Thank you, Steve. Next on our list is member Gustafson, and then member Haber after that.
Great. If I cut out, let me know. Raise your hand and I'll call in again. I have two questions about the, or comments about the budget. And I had a couple others, but I can keep those for later if necessary. But about the budget, since I am on Business and Finance, I won't repeat most of what I said there. But I will say that, again, I would urge us to keep social emotional learning in mind and the counselors that we had appointed. I, I hope there's some way to find some way to be creative about that because everything I'm reading about reopening is focusing on, has been focused on the social emotional needs of students. And we know that our psychological staff and counselors are going to be very busy doing evaluations and other things. So I wanted to emphasize that. We look carefully at that. The other concern, and I was talking with some people with CPAC this afternoon, and they also had a question about the number of para, para staff and the ability to meet our needs across the district regarding special education. I know that Christine had said previously, they aren't all tied to IEPs, but they are still, in my understanding, providing some kind of services to our students related to special education. And so having a loss of 20, almost 30 of them, I think 27.9 in the first phase, and then increasing numbers after that is concerning. So those are two budgetary questions. I will look forward to hearing more details next week that we had requested. So those are my two budgetary comments. If you want my others, please let me know and I'll ask those or I can save them for later.
Okay, member Haber notes that she echoes member Gustafson's concern on SCL and passes her time. So our next member is member Haynes.
Hello. When we were in the Business Finance Committee meeting, I asked Dan to look back at, at the amount of federal money that we got during the 08 crisis, just to provide a historical reference point, I suppose. Not that that's a guarantee of what's coming this time around or not, but, so 10 years ago, 10 plus years ago, when this, when we were in a crisis again, the federal dollars totaled 5.7 million, spread out over four years. The most that we received in any one single year was 2.3 million. So again, that's not a, that's not a guarantee, of course, of what we could expect this time around, but I just wanted to throw that out there. Unfortunately, I, I think Mike said this earlier, but basically the numbers, if you look at them, everything is saying that this is actually worse than what happened in 08 and probably by a pretty wide margin. So that's it. I would please encourage everybody watching this to ask your federal representation, your state representation for all the possible $8 we can get because we're going to need them. But after that, all we can do is cross our fingers and that's not much of a strategy. We'll have to do more. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, member Ember.
Well, the, first of all, thank you to the administration and to Business and Finance. It's a torturous exercise. But if, if it's a statutory issue in terms of when notification has to occur, you know, perhaps the legislature can even look at that because we're not unique as a district in this situation. And districts are going to have a hard time knowing what to do until they have better information. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Laura?
Did you call?
I'm member Christian Baum.
Yeah. Sorry. I wanted to be sure that you called my name. So my, my comments are that, first of all, I want to commend the staff for having to go through such a heartbreaking exercise that, you know, just a couple of months ago, we were talking about adding some staff to take care of some of the enduring shortfalls that we have with class sizes and, and supporting student needs. And here we are now essentially gutting, gutting, plus some, any of the gains that have been made since the last recession. And it's heartbreaking and it's demoralizing in, in so many regards. So I appreciate the time, the thoughtfulness and, and the care that went into this. That being said, I just, and I know that this is a little bit premature, but, you know, I, I would like to see an exercise like this, looking at, you know, if we go into remote learning for, start out with remote learning for next year, or even if we don't, what is this going to look like? If we have to go through tier one, tier two, tier three, tier four, what does it look like for the services that are provided? You know, we can, we can speculate, but I think that, that being able to, to see that and, you know, how we would be able to, how we would or would not be able to address remote learning if we have, you know, so many, 65% of our staff gone. It's just not possible. I mean, education essentially, as we know it, is, is not possible. And so I would just like to reiterate member Haynes' comment to all the listeners and viewers out there that reach out. We need to get some, some stimulus money in here so that we can mitigate our, our impact here. Thank you.
And it's still terrible, just to point out, not 65%, 65 teachers, which is horrible.
Yes, sorry.
The, and hopefully member McCall, Superintendent McCall can make some comments on that at some point in terms of, as I talked about, programs versus class sizes, of course, they'll both be, be hit. But as we foresee, those are things that the school committee should weigh in on because that's curricular in nature. Remember, LaVoy?
Thanks, Ken. I, I would echo a lot of what's been said. I, I do think it would be impactful if administration could take the tiers and perhaps put a compilation of what it looks in totality. I just did some quick math, and I mean, tiers two through five, 45 teachers, 49 paras. That is a tremendous amount of, of staff and perhaps even looking at that versus what we have in totality today. So people could see what a percentage gutting changes these are. And I would agree with the sentiment that advocacy is certainly needed, but I would also ask administration to see, is there an opportunity to perhaps even look at a hybrid model that perhaps there are learners out there that might even benefit from a, a more remote experience? And does that give the opportunity to perhaps have more learners in that experience than, than less, less teachers because of the way a curriculum were, were delivered? And if that were possible, you might be able to look at reducing, reducing staff because then you can, you can allocate, you might not have to hit those cuts. And I don't know if there are assessment tools or if there is an opportunity to, to speak to parents, to students, to see what their experience is and to see if there are, are learners out there that are finding a more remote and they're self-driven and they, they can really engage in that type. Because I think that there is an opportunity as a district for us to define perhaps a new model of learning. And it, it's an opportunity for us to do it. And I'm sure we have the data. We've, we have enough learners out there, enough teachers that have experienced it that could probably say, yeah, for some kids, this can, this can work. And, and I know there's still a social emotional element, but I would just encourage us to, to think about that opportunity as well versus reduction because no matter what we see, if it's this summer, the fall, next year at this time, it is going to be different than what we knew for at least some time. And I think it's a, it's a fair fact to look at that and think about, are there ways that we could re-engineer our resources to be able to reduce reductions? That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Member Long-Balil? Linda? I'll just momentarily skip Linda. Amy, member Richeloski?
Yeah, I, I just, I agree with many of the things that have been said before. I do really look forward to getting the detailed information about opportunities to increase revenue through fees or other sources so that we can see if we can close the gap a little bit. And then I would like to understand in a future meeting, as Laura had said, whether or not the strategy for reductions will change once we understand from Desi whether or not we're going to be starting remote or not. Because certainly you would prioritize different types of staff that would be deemed less, easier to furlough for a period of time. And, and I don't really have And I don't really have a sense of what your approach is going to be on that.
All right. Member Longbalil seems to have came back and then seems to have gone again. I'm going to ramble for a second to see if she comes back. I do also want to point out to, this is a consideration, since I am next alphabetically, that as we cut, we're going to lose kids, right? So as you degrade the quality of the programs, we're going to have out-of-district placements for students, we're going to have kids. If you cut athletics, kids who want to play sports at the high school are going to go to St. John's, they're going to go to NDA, they're going to go to whatever holy name is called. So every dollar we save now is going to come back to lose money downstream. And it's not, I don't make it a simple calculation, but it's true, right? And some of the out-of-district placements that we'll see as we degrade our services are going to be costly, especially in eras where circuit breaker reimbursement is probably going to be lower than we're accustomed to seeing. Linda, are you back? I don't see Linda on the list, so I will go forward to Member Mitchell. Ben, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, you know, I just want to make some additional comments that came out of business and finance to, the lists that Daryl put together include no additional work with any of the unions on how to save some money. It assumes everything is moving along as the current contracts are. So I just want to throw that out to everybody that, you know, there's still work that can be done without that much level of furloughs, but it would require a group effort between both the school committee, the unions, the school district. So it's, you know, even though those cuts look very large, it's actually pretty impressive if, say, you say everyone, there's a pay freeze. I think Daryl mentioned numbers of around, that's a $2 million savings if there's a pay freeze across the board. So I think, I think there's, we haven't gone into our, we want to call it a bag of tricks yet, but we haven't started investigating all the other options that are out there. And I think that's still on the administration's plate to look at. So that was just a piece of information I wanted to share with the group that came up in business and finance.
Linda, you're back.
I'm back. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, good. I want to echo what Ben, Member Mitchell, just said about exploring other options to layoffs. There are other options, furloughs, et cetera, et cetera. I think those are important to explore. And along the same lines, I'd like to echo what Member Ember said pertaining to the fact that the statutory June 15 deadline is not set in stone. It can be changed if we decide that we want more time, and I think we probably could use more time, to make a decision based on information rather than based on the lack of information, which is where we are right now, and that we should reach out to our legislators to see if that can, if they would be willing to carry that forward. So lastly, one of the other members mentioned that people should reach out to their federal legislators. I anticipate that our federal legislators here in Massachusetts are likely to be supportive of funding schools without any reservation, schools in cities and towns, and that people should reach out to their friends and family in other states where there might be more of a question where their legislators stand on that issue, to call their legislators and ask them to support cities and towns and school districts. So those are my comments.
All right, thank you. And we can talk more about that under the advocacy as well. Member Atmar?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so, and as we've talked about in business and finance, the, to get us to where we would need to be budget-wise, certainly, I mean, is a grim picture. I mean, you look at 40, 67 teachers across the district. I mean, and someone kind of, to get a rough magnitude of what that's going to be looking like, you're looking at 45 in PK 8, so that's nine grades. So you're thinking five teachers every grade, and we've only got seven schools. So you can kind of look at that in basically every elementary school almost is, would be losing a teacher each grade. And so that's, that can give you at least a rough idea of how grievous or how serious those, kind of those cuts could be. And again, true, as said, we have to plan for the worst, and that, hopefully, at least, certainly would be the worst. But kind of just the other thing I wanted to at least highlight, and it's a little bit jumping ahead, and so I'm not, I'll just leave it that it seemed to create an odd juxtaposition with the presentation about all of these degrees of cuts that we would need to make the millions of dollars to remove from our budget, while later on, there's an item to be voted on pertaining to bus transportation that would be paying, still having us pay about 1.3 million for this year for bus transportation that we're not using. Again, kind of, at least it dawned on me the juxtaposition of those two things side by side of spending millions of, over a million dollars for bus transportation this year that we're not using, and then on top of that, having to cut millions from our budget for next year for teachers. I know it's an item for discussion later. I just wanted to highlight that putting those two side by side was, it at least created a stark contrast with that. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Atmar. Member Silva?
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Basically, I want to reiterate what Member Lavoy said. I mentioned this in the education subcommittee. I would really like if we could start looking into a hybrid model. We have been forced into this remote learning experience where we never had before. Many teachers had to learn by fire, unfortunately. But there are students out there who really have thrived in this hybrid model, like this remote learning model. They are self-motivated. They get to do the classes during the hours that they feel most productive in. They're learning the, you know, experiences of handling their own schedules and understanding what responsibility is and, you know, working out their own schedules in the manner that their families and they can work with. So if there is a way to also look into this hybrid model instead of just jumping down this path and moving forward, giving, you know, students and teachers a little bit of this flexibility that works best for both cases, I would really, you know, would love our administration to start looking into that. So I just wanted to reiterate a lot of the things that happens that I agree with, but just wanted to highlight that that is something that I'm very interested in.
Thank you. Member Smith?
I would just like to reiterate the support for the administration's work that they have put into these various plans and the business and finance committee as well. I don't have anything to add to the conversation other than thanking all those who have worked hard. I'm not looking forward to these very tough decisions that we're going to have to make in the near future. Thank you.
Member Weeks?
Yeah, not too much to add, but a couple small things, I suppose. Just really interested in hearing back from the unions as well. You know, seeing if a pay freeze or other mechanisms would be something that the unions could agree to in order to save staff. You know, if we can save $2 to $3 million through that mechanism, you know, we can restore or keep a lot of those positions. And I'd also, you know, and I can be patient with DESI as well, but I am frustrated with the lack of guidance or the speed of guidance in which we are getting information from DESI. From little things like graduation to big things like grading that we never got guidance on, and we just all had to kind of figure it out ourselves, to big things, you know, we never really got guidance on teacher evaluation. And so now we're stuck with these non-PTSSs and a June 15 deadline, and we never really got clear guidance on how they're supposed to be evaluated in the first place with half the year gone. So now that we're looking towards the future and looking at things like reopening and the potential of not reopening, and we're looking at cutting staff, you know, if we're not reopening in the fall, then we can save money on transportation, we can save money on those custodians, we can find other ways, and our priorities would be flipped upside down to what we need in order to move forward. So I think there is a push that the administration and all of us really should be making towards DESI into giving us clear guidance into what is happening in August, I mean, by July 1. You know, we need time to plan. And I think if we just kind of say, oh, you know, DESI's really busy, they can take time, eventually that's going to come back to hurt us when we're potentially cutting, you know, over 100 staff.
Member Woodland?
Hi. So thank you again for the information here and everything that you've been working on to get us to this point. I have a couple points that I wanted to bring up. One question that I have is with this deadline, what is the roadblock or what is the estimated next steps for the timeline for, like negotiations, for talking with the unions and finding out about what they're open to? We've been talking about it for a while, and, I mean, maybe this is more of a process kind of question of just, so when can we get the next step moving? If we're looking at, you know, June 15? You know, is there a holdup? Is there something we should be doing as a committee? Is there, I don't know, I'm asking that question. The other thing I just want to point out, too, while we're looking at these, you know, kind of worst-case scenarios, just another point to put on the table is that we are already looking at being under about 35 teachers before this all happens. That would be about 2.6 million addition to the budget that we were not, we were not addressing that shortfall entirely with the initial FY21 budget. So just when we're talking to people in the district, you know, it's another point of just how far in the hole we could be. And I know that whatever we bring forward for the next school year in terms of actually educating that part of it, it might, the way we look at teaching and staffing, as we're talking about tonight, could be completely different than based on that 35 teachers-needed model. But it's just another piece of the puzzle that I find illustrative. And I think the other point, too, that I wanted to ask besides the negotiation timeline question is with, if we do come down to cutting this level of, this number of teachers and paras and so on, what will these programs look like that are not cut? Right, the programs that we are keeping to try to keep students in our district and not choice out, will, what programs are going to end up being shells? And just, that's something that I want to keep tabs on, but that's, that's it. Thank you.
So Dr. McCall, can you address the first, at least the first question? And the third is kind of where I want our conversation to turn at some point. Even if it's not today, it's got to be next time about like exactly what Linda just said, really.
Right. So, you know, in reference to the timing, you know, again, I had initial meetings with all of the unions already. We're now coming back, and we're meeting, and we're impact bargaining. So it's a little different in terms, not a little different, this is what we're doing. So these are the next steps. It's actually happening. We have one tomorrow. You know, we've also met with the PEC to talk with them about auctions associated with maybe changing some of the, not necessarily plan design, but the ratio of what our employees pay versus what the district pays. So again, some of that is still up in the air, but as soon as we have more defined kind of information, that will then, you know, help. And I think Member Mitchell talked about that right off the bat, and he mentioned that at business and finance. You know, this is kind of a worst-case scenario, this is a worst-case scenario. You know, $10 million. With, you know, again, I can't speak for our unions, which, you know, and I'm not going to, and I'm not going to speak for the employees. But, you know, if there are some factors that get taken into account and if there are some, you know, things that are given back or not taken by the unions that would help mitigate that $10 million number.
And in terms of Member Woodland's last question, which I think is very cogent, right? And as a committee, and I had said this at the beginning of our conversation, we want to respect the fact that we don't want to talk about individual programs because there's individual people in those programs and decisions haven't been made. But when we have conversations about, are we going to lose a program that we talked a lot about, whatever that might be, versus having higher class sizes? I mean, those are the, like, what guidance are you looking for us for the rest of the night and for our next meeting about having those kind of conversations with you? Like, because I think that's a place where we, as a committee, right, have responsibility to be discussing with you. It's ultimately your responsibility, we're kicked cut. But we have a responsibility to discussing with you philosophies and curriculum, right? And as Member Woodland said, you know, what are programs going to look like that we've talked, been talking about as a committee for the nine years or whatever it's been, feels like 100, that have been on the committee? How do we have that conversation? How can we be helpful to you to have that conversation so that we're facilitating our responsibility for you, to you as a committee?
So, you know, it's people versus programs. I mean, that's oftentimes what it comes down to. Again, I think you mentioned this, Ken. When you start taking programs away, that's typically when you start to lose kids. So again, if you know, athletics isn't in that first, you know, tier one, tier two, you know, model, because once you start taking athletics away, you will lose students. I think Chair Mills mentioned that. And we've gone through this exercise, you know, many times in the past, and it's never to this extent in terms of this dollar amount. Even back in '08, '09, we didn't move to this level. But when we're talking about what, you know, again, programs might look like, we don't have a lot of programs to begin with, you know, in reference to what we have internally, anyway. So what would, you know, what's going to happen is you're going to start losing support. You're going to lose a lot of administrative support. We're going to lose, class sizes are going to balloon. I'm sorry, Bob, Ember. And, because I know that's been something that we've had many, many conversations about, but ultimately, you know, what we would try to do is, again, hit individual, not programs, but classes, so that programs aren't completely wiped out. And that's the challenging part, because again, you know, one of our issues in our district is we're not, you know, we don't have an elementary, a middle, and a high school. We have two K8s, we have a K4, we are, yeah, we have a K4, we have a K2, a 3.5, 3K5s. You know, lots of middle schools, our high school. So we're kind of all over the place, which makes it very, very challenging for us, which is why this whole exercise, we're, you know, we were able to pull this together, but it's still going to require us to have some pretty in-depth conversations with our principals around where we might go ultimately.
And just, and I'll follow, I'll end this follow-up. I still think I'm following up on this question. Like athletics is a program, that's really what I was getting at. You know, as we make curricular changes as a result of staffing reductions, because it's not just people or programs, it's people who run programs, right? I think we need to be transparent with the public and with the committee, or you need to be transparent with the committee, I don't know, about what that's, how that changes the curriculum in the schools. You know, I remember when, again, I think it was just Bob and I who were on this committee and others were in the audience, when there were kids playing violins, literally about strings, there were people speaking foreign languages to defend foreign language. And when we were in public, a lot of those things were a little bit, people would come to meetings more than they might listen or advocate. But whatever the programs are that might be reduced, or there are any of our SCL programs we put in, I think those are conversations as a committee we should be having. Again, it's ultimately your decision, you're in charge of reducing positions. But when it deals with the curriculum, I do think that the committee should be weighing in. Member Gustafson, did you have a follow-up on one of her questions just before I go down to Member Young about, because she did ask a question about the paras in the special education. I don't think you actually answered her question when she asked it about the impact of the large number of paras that are being reduced on special education. Again, if that's all, if they're the IEPs or whatnot.
Yeah, it's, you know, again, not all, not all paras are tied back to special education. Yeah, it's, it, you know, again, not all, not all paras are tied back to a special education. So I think Christine mentioned that uh, in our Business of Finance meeting. So um, you know, we'd have um, many paraprofessionals there. And, but ultimately, uh, there are an awful lot of paraprofessionals who are tied back to uh, not just an individual student, but also maybe classes and so forth. So it would require us to change um, special education delivery. We would still be within compliance of an IEP. Uh, we'd make sure that we still did that, but um, it would look very different. And again, I think this is what we're talking about when we're talking about um, the, the adverse effects of um, you know, these types of decisions. This, that's an, that's an area, um, besides large class sizes, besides programs being lost, all of those um, come into play with, with reductions at this level.
Uh, Member Young?
Thanks. Um, so I guess following up on uh, Dr. McCall's most recent comment, you know, as we go forward and we're looking at these cuts, I mean, one of the things that's ballooned a lot over the last few years is out of district special ed tuition. And, you know, make sure that if we're making cuts now, you know, that to save, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars in a position doesn't cost us a hundred thousand in sped tuition. Um, you know, that's, that's a really big issue that, you know, we have to look at, or just in a, a legal complaint or something like that. Um, cause it costs money to, to defend those. So, you know, make sure we're still in compliance. The big thing that I saw uh, looking at kind of all the information that has been provided for tonight, you know, we're looking at coming out of this fiscal year as it stands right now with about nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, in the tier one and tier two cuts, I don't see anything looking at using any of that money to you know, prepay any of our expenses in the next fiscal year. You know, if we could prepay some of that out of district tuition, prepay transportation, um, something like that. I don't know what options like those are available. I know some districts do prepay sped tuition uh, in order to bring it over the fiscal year. So, you know, just what options have we looked at and, you know, if we're having that, you know, what can we do?
So, y- yeah, so you, you saw Dan's response, uh, but what we can do is um, roll funds.
Sorry, Darrell, just, just for, um, just for open meeting law, Dan's response was that transportation um, can't be uh prepaid, other things can be.
Yes. Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Um, but uh, I, I, and again, I don't have, let me see if I can open up the document. You know, in terms of, you know, carrying transportation revolving over and so forth, I believe um, Dr. Didi does have some funds that he has carried over. But he's also looking at carrying over some money in circuit breaker as well as school choice. So there's still a, you know, if you look at that first tier, s- much of the money that uh, I think you just mentioned is actually getting thrown into that tier one. And Dan, if you can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. Uh, we're looking to bring forward um, um, a minimum of about uh, uh, five hundred thousand dollars in, in circuit breaker. Um, that is in tier one and also looking to bring forward um, uh, approximately uh, uh, two hundred thousand in school choice um, as well. Um, prepaid to which is, is a great idea. Um, there are some restrictions um, as to how much you can pay, um, but certainly that, that is a viable option on the table as well.
Okay. So I guess just a one, one, that five hundred, two hundred thousand we see is taking into consideration that nine hundred thousand we'd finish the year with.
Yes.
All right, Member Alia.
Hi, okay, so um, I just have a question. Is there, are we gonna have a, are we going to get answers on the budget before the six fifteen timeline? To get pink slips out? Or, or do we not know if we're gonna get answers before then, before that decision's made?
So is your question about the state, Melissa?
Yeah, are we gonna have answers um, on the budget before six fifteen?
No, we won't.
We won't. So we have to make this decision before we even know what's gonna happen, right?
Yes, we do. So that's, you know, and unfortunately um, districts are, you know, throughout the state are all in the same, I, actually throughout the country, but we're all in the same boat in terms of not knowing um, you know, where we're at. You know, we, we get about thirty percent of our funding from the state. So um, you know, which is why when we look at um, you know, what we need from the state, you know, if, if our state revenues drop, uh, that directly affects school districts and um, you know, especially a school district like ours um, that is um, not necessarily, um, you know, we're, we're in a situation where we're, we're not a needy district, so uh, we do not get as much support in terms of um, federal dollars such as Title I and so forth. Um, we're hopeful that the next round of um, federal stimulus funds that come through uh, do not have the same um, stringent regulations around them and also support public education um, more so than the current round of funds that went through. So, yeah, and to, so, right, we, we will not have uh, a decision by the state, they will not have a budget by June fifteenth.
All right. And then if we were to make cuts by six fifteen, and say we get more money than what we thought we would get, would we be able to rehire, of course, those staff, you know, find other employment, obviously?
Yes, yeah. And that's, that's the point. So, you know, what does happen? Again, this is something that we've done in the past in this district, um, where uh, non-professional status teachers um, were pink slipped. And uh, it basically puts a person in a position where um, you know, we, we can bring them back. Uh, it would, you know, it would be hopeful that we would be able to do so, but I think um, Member Dennis um, mentioned this earlier in his, his conversation as part of his presentation. Um, you know, if we, if we held on to everyone and just said, you know what, we're just gonna, you know, we're gonna hope and pray that everything works out well and all of a sudden November rolls around or October and, you know, we're, we're still in a one twelfth and we do not have the capacity to pay for our payroll for the month of October or November. We're laying people off then. And then we are absolutely messing up um, programs, classes, um, e- everything, everything. So, you know, and that's, that's the hard part about this is that we're trying to predict uh, how much, you know, where we might need to go. Um, but at the same time, we still have to put ourselves in a situation where we're, we're protecting ourselves financially so that, you know, somewhere down the road, there will be funds that we, we will have. Uh, we'll just want to be able to make sure that we're able to get teachers back into the classrooms.
Thank you.
Great, Member Brown?
Hi, I want to thank the administration for putting on those very sobering numbers. Hopefully we don't get to tier five at all. Um, and I know a few members have been bringing up um, the eight unions and the dates. Um, in legal affairs back like a month or so ago, we did have our attorney on, we went through all eight union contracts. We have, it's really only one date for the non-professional teacher status um, on June fifteenth. Um, so we, we're prepared for that. And um, we are, as Dr. McCall says, uh, when uh, communication with the eight unions, we do have the WRVA tomorrow at three o'clock for impact bargaining. This is very fluid and I'm glad the administration is looking forward um, and ha- having the worst case scenario. Hopefully we don't get to that point, so that's all I have.
All right, and we'll circle back to Member Dennis. Now you get your own time, Mike.
Well, thank you. So, uh, you know, I think that there are um, two monumental tasks um, that are ahead of, of us and ahead of the administration. You know, one is um, our budget planning for, for next year and, and the second is the plan for reopening uh, for next year and what next year even looks like. Um, in my opinion, anything else is, is a far, far, far third, uh, distant third. Um, and you know, these are tasks that um, require um, full-time dedication, um, full-time thought and energy. And you know, a lot of different, we can remark about how different organizations kind of operate on their own cadence. Some types of organizations tend to be able to move quickly and, and plan uh, more quickly than others. And um, you know, I would suggest that, you know, given um, our, our timeline, uh, we have some key decisions or, you know, if, or, you know, just less than three weeks away and uh, with regards to, to budget, but, but also in terms of reopening. We don't have the luxury of waiting for Desi guidance, in my opinion. Um, you know, one of the quotes that I've mentioned in a business finance meeting is that in times of disruption, uh, clarity is the next best thing to certainty. Um, and you know, it seems to me that there's a lot of thought leadership um, that's out there around principles for reopening, what, you know, whether it means, you know, making sure that you have an online or a remote learning option even when you open. Uh, what it means in terms of, of sizes and, and transportation and, and looping and common areas and things of that nature. These are things that I think we ought to be planning for, but um, we need to be doing it on a very accelerated basis because it impacts virtually every aspect of, of what happens in a school district. Um, and it has an impact, I think, curricularly. Keeping in mind that uh, our, our teachers um, end their year in just a few weeks. And so um, I, I say this because, you know, I know that, um, I know that we're working hard, I know that we're working hard in comparison to maybe the way that we're faster and compared to the way that we've worked in, in the past. But, you know, whatever term you want to use, whether you call it sprinting or, or slotting or, um, at the end of the day, there really needs to be a very dedicated, timely focus um, to these two questions. And, and um, you know, I think more than, than, than just on an advisory level and, and more uh, than waiting for, for Desi guidance. And, you know, again, I, I'd encourage um, Darrell, you and, and the team to think about how we might uh, organize ourselves um, to be able to do that, to be able to plan.
And uh, I'll take my chairs literally here to echo that in terms of the contingency, I, I called a contingency plan, I, I, whatever, the reopening plan. You know, ASAP, if we can know what the plan is for that committee, you know, who's on it, what their agendas are, what the timeframe is in their meeting. Um, because, you know, we, we can't wait um, for the state. And I call the contingency because it can't be a plan, right? It has to be a series of nested plans um, that uh, that we're, that we're um, preparing for, right? Because the virus is in charge and, and, and we can make a plan, we have to be prepared to, to shift. So that said, we went around the table. Um, we do have four recommendations requiring action by the school committee. I do have a couple of public comments that have come in. Um, why don't we go through, uh, does anybody else have anything they need to comment on, on the report? I know I did focus this on and I agree wholeheartedly with Mike. Those are by far and away the two most important things we need to talk about. Um, are there comments people have? Uh, Malia? Andrew Guston says she has a question about ESY.
So my, I, I wasn't sure, this relates to the budget um, document we just reviewed, but it also gets into some other discussions that we maybe be on tonight. Um, but I know in the document, the assumption is that the ESY programming this summer will be entirely remote. And I know that Desi has come out with guidance as recently as Friday, saying that it perhaps should be a hybrid consideration. Um, I know that's a new guidance, um, so I didn't know if, I just wanted to bring it up because I know our assumption is it will be remote entirely. Um, and I know we don't have an answer to that right now, but I didn't know where thinking was on that or if there's any thoughts on considering a hybrid model that might then impact our budgetary plan. So you don't need to answer that right now, but it has been asked programmatically in community, but it also is a budgetary um, consideration because it is assumed in what you created that it would be um, for certain, a half, I think the plan is that it's a half day and it will be all remote. So I wanted to raise that question as well.
Darrell, do you have anything about that or?
So um, again, Desi just came out with guidance on this uh, the other day, uh, Chris and I. And you know, and one of the things is, you know, when we talked about the, the remote learning part of this, it was that um, because we had no guidance around this, we had to plan as though um, we would be looking at something that would happen remotely. Um, now that we have more guidance from Desi, I guess we can, uh, not even I guess, but uh, we will be taking a look at this a, a little more closely in terms of what types of services could be rendered. Um, again, I've not had conversations yet. Um, you know, we, I do have a, a meeting with the superintendent tomorrow. Uh, superintendent Stu, so I'm sure this will be a hot topic for discussion um, as well. So hopefully I have some more information tomorrow.
Okay, Member Christian Baum, you had uh, raised your virtual hand.
Yes, thank you. Um, regarding the, the reopening uh, plan and um, you know, I would just uh, make sure that uh, we are looking at how to maximize uh, FaceTime, and I use that word not as the, the name of the platform, but simply as an opportunity to have FaceTime between teachers and students. Um, as a, as a cornerstone of uh, a pillar of success for uh, for moving forward. And I would also echo that we need to take lessons, uh, mention that we need to take lessons learned from this year, that access to technology needs to be planned for, uh, the focus on the core academics and um, and any uh, professional development among staff, whether it be through PLCs, a way to uh, communicate best practices. Um, all of those, I think, need to be part of that reopening plan so that you know, it also, and also the flexibility so that we can, you know, as we know that the, the, the virus is in control. Um, we may open as normal and may find that a surge comes out and we need to go remote. So I think flexibility needs to be uh, worked into that plan. Thank you.
Kim, remember Lavoie, you had a follow-up from Member Gustafson's uh, comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to, it sounds like um, Dr. McCall's gonna be on a call tomorrow and is going to have more information or talk about extended school year. So I'd like to ask that perhaps some sort of formal um, response to the members of this body is, is sent out afterwards. Um, so we don't wait until the next meeting to, to hear what he's formulating for a response because I think to Member Dennis's point, um, we're looking at a sprint to, to put um, perhaps a, a, a plan in place to, to go back and that sprint would conclude before um, extended school year would even begin. So I think there is valuable opportunity there to think of the two together.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda is recommendations requiring action by the school committee. Uh, so the first is to support a resolution for enhanced federal funding. I will take a motion uh, to support this resolution and if it's, if it's moved and seconded, I'll read it and give some context and then we can discuss it. So do I have a, a motion? The move, is there a second? All right, it's been.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Um, so let me see if I can um, find where I have it, because I know I have it somewhere. So as, as I'm opening my file here, the, the context of this is that um, as we've discussed, um, and people can mute. Um, so as we discussed, um, you know, a key part to our funding difficulty is that the federal government really needs to step up and, and deliver I don't know, stimulus money isn't really the word for it, it's not really stimulating, but just money that is allowing us to operate and, and do what we need to do. And um, and it really is a bipartisan issue, you know, I would disagree a little that we, that giving, talking to our local representatives doesn't do much because the- the, and I say this, you know, from, from the same side of them, the bill that was sent to the Senate was really, you know, a D O A bill and they knew it. So I think both sides of the, of the aisle need to come together to, to give something that's going to work now, not in September or October. So I do think there's value to that. Remember, Ember and I worked on this together, you know, to, in, in full disclosure, a little bit plagiarized in the context of it being drawn from both the Boston School Committee as well as the Federation of Teachers. So am I not showing the right thing? Okay, is, am I, am I showing the right thing now? Darrell?
I don't see anything.
Yeah, anything can.
Oh, great. Okay. Let me try that again. It says that I was sharing a window. Let me share again. I guess I maybe had pinned Bob to the main screen. Are you seeing it now? Okay. So the resolution reads as such, "A resolution supportive education funding for COVID-19, whereas the Massachusetts Legislature and Governor enacted the Student Opportunity Act in 2019 because the state's school funding formula was out of date and failed to provide all students in the education, with the education to which they are constitutionally entitled, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic is a monumental and unprecedented challenge emerging quickly and demanding an immediate overhaul of the instructional plans and strategies of school systems across the country. And our students' needs are even greater now due to the pandemic. And whereas the upcoming academic year, many students will need enhanced educational opportunities, technology, health, and guidance services. And whereas the nation's public schools remain committed to delivering high-quality instruction while ensuring the health and safety of our students and staff. And whereas municipal and state governments are limited by revenue and their requirements to present balanced budgets to accommodate the extraordinary needs brought on by this crisis. And whereas these challenges will persist and likely grow as COVID-19 affects our economy and destabilizes funding for public schools. And whereas reputable economists have predicted the end of the nation's economic expansion and forecast a recession that may be deep and long-lasting. And whereas the numbers of unemployment claims are already the highest we have seen since the Great Depression and may only grow. And whereas revenue shortfalls unequivocally result in budget cuts and personnel reductions in all school systems. And whereas these budget cuts will be happening at the same time that public school systems will be working to address the immense instructional challenges of unfinished learning that many students will face coming out of this school year. And whereas the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act era of 2009 provided $100 billion in education funding with investments in both the Education Stabilization Fund and various federal categorical programs for public schools, such as Title I and the Individual Disabilities Act. And whereas Congress followed ERA in 2010 with $10 billion in additional funding for the Education Jobs Fund to help school districts retain existing employees, recall former employees, and hire new ones. And whereas by comparison, the recent coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, or CARES Act, provides only $13 billion for educational stabilization funding, which is less than half of 1% of the total $2.2 trillion relief provided in the CARES Act and is far below the investment that the federal government provided in 2009 and 2010 in ERA and the Education Jobs Fund. And whereas public education is one of the largest employers of any organization, public or private, in the nation. And whereas published economic research has demonstrated a strong connection between a country's GDP growth and its investments in elementary and secondary education. And whereas research has repeatedly found a strong causal relationship between levels of schooling and wages that individuals earn over a lifetime. And whereas for public schools to thrive and for our students to realize a bright and productive future, the federal government needs to make a substantial new investment in our well-being. And whereas the Council of Great City Schools, the N E A, the American Federation of Teachers, the National School Awards Association, the American Association of School Administrators, and the National Parent Teachers Association, and others have called for some $200 billion in relief for the nation's public schools. And whereas this level of funding is the minimum needed by the nation's public schools to sustain and accelerate their academic achievement trends over the past decades, let it be resolved with the members of the Waukesha Regional School District Committee, joined with the Superintendent of Schools and urging the Massachusetts Congressional Delegation, including our United States Senators and House of Representative members, to advocate for and approve additional federal education funding for our nation's public schools such that the Commonwealth can fund all public schools at the level set forth in Governor Charlie Baker's initial proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. So I appreciate you letting me read that. I thought it was important to say those words out loud. And again, I think it's a bipartisan issue. Personally, I think there is, you know, as it always is, compromise on both sides to bring forth a bill tomorrow that addresses this issue because we talk about our deadlines. We're not the only school district that has this deadline about making hard decisions about people's lives and kids' education, and it can't be held up for whatever pet projects either side of the aisle has. It's, it's vital that this gets passed immediately. That last bit was just me yapping. So do people have comments about the motion on the floor? You can just unmute yourself if you do.
Hi, this is Christina. Hi, I just want to thank you and Bob for putting that together. I think it's really important that we do what we can to advocate for the funding. And I also want to thank you for letting me share that with the Algonquin Regional, with the Northborough-Southborough School Committee, which I did. And I'm hoping they share it with their Northborough and their Southborough school committees too. Thank you.
Thank you, member Lavoy.
I just have a quick comment. I appreciate whoever put that together. I do have concern though, when there are generalized statements calling out economists and without saying who those are and who we're citing. So I think it's important to cite sources when we are mentioning terms like that, that it's not just a vague statement.
Yes, I say I took this, some of that language is from B P S. Not that I'm, it's an excuse, not, it's a reason, not an excuse. Are there other comments or anyone wish to make any revisions? Seeing none, since there is a motion on the floor and we are remote, we need to do this by roll call. So member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yeah.
Godbout? Godbout says yes. Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ember?
Yes.
Christian Baum?
Yes.
Lavoy? I'm sorry, Matt, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Yes. Long Belial?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mills, yes. Mitchell?
Yes.
Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
And Young?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if you know that your phone is on mute.
However, I really didn't know.
Somebody's dishwashing.
Ah, yeah, I'm not dishwashing, but I was on mute. I'm sorry. And I rambled and said lots of really eloquent stuff. And now I'll say lots of really inelegant things. I didn't hear a motion. I do think we need to discuss this though. So if we're not going to discuss one of the motion, I'd want to take the agenda out of order and go back to the discussion of the reports. I do think that we need to at least hear about this. Alternatively, I guess perhaps better procedurally would be discuss, discuss under Business and Finance because Business and Finance did discuss it. So perhaps as I'm talking out loud in my inelegant way, we can discuss this under Business and Finance if no one wants to make a motion tonight to do this, to, for this. So I'm hearing no motion.
What are you on?
I am on, was I completely, I didn't know when I was muted.
You didn't say a thing.
I'm sorry. All right. So item two on the recommendations requiring action for the school committee. What I said was that I would take a motion for item two, which is authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign an amendment to the Contract for School Transportation dated June 19, 2018, between the Waukesha Regional School District and Double A Transportation Incorporated, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. That said, the business finance has concerns about this. If we make a motion, we can put it on the floor, discuss it, and either vote yes, no, or table. Attorney Bertullus is also on the call right now. Alternatively, if there is no motion, we can discuss it under Business and Finance. Is there a motion to, to do what I just said, to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign an amendment of the Contract for School Transportation dated June 18, 2018 between Waukesha Regional School District and Double A Transportation, Inc. of Shrewsbury, Mass? Is there a motion? That time I talked, right? Okay.
Sure did.
All right. I'm not hearing a motion. We will need to talk about this though, so we can talk about under Business and Finance, which I may take out of order soon so that we can have our attorney on the line. The next item on the agenda is number three, which is authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign an amendment to the Contract for S P E D and District Transportation dated July 1, 2019, between Waukesha Regional School District and Double A Transportation Incorporated, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. Is there a motion? Put this on the floor?
So can I characterize this the same way as you characterized your, your last, last motion?
Sounds good. So we will discuss these topics under Business and Finance. Then the agenda is a motion to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign the memorandum of agreement between W R S D and W R E A, amendment of memorandum, amended amendment to memorandum of agreement, COVID-19 closure. My understanding, the superintendent is that this has not been voted on by the H O D, so he wants us to pass this over right now and bring it back. Is that the case? This is dealing with evaluations for the most part, is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, there are a few items in there, but that's the primary one.
All right. So I just want to, so the next item on our agenda was, I said I'd come back and do the, do the public hearing, which I do want to do. And then if someone objects, I want to take Business Finance out of order so that, so that our attorney can, can, can hear. So yes, let's just keep Joe on Rebecca till we get through these comments. And then we'll, we'll go to Business and Finance. So I have the things up. I just have to go through way too many things open right now. Find the correct link. So we did have two comments from the last time I looked. So the first comment was from Marian Capollino, who says, "Good evening. Could you share the results of the district-wide survey that was sent to parents on their experiences with remote learning?" Thank you. Again, public comment isn't a, a dialogue, but Darrell, do you have anything to say to that?
Actually, I believe in Ed's sub, that was discussed this evening. So there might be a little bit more during Bob's presentation.
Okay. The next comment is from Carolyn Hanley of Wyoming Drive in Holden. She says, "As I listen to the presentation this evening, I have two questions. One, if the schools are to reopen in the fall, there will be a huge need for P P E, more nurses and more custodial staff. How is that being considered in the budget plans, especially with planned staff reductions? And two, understanding that W R H S is a Division One school for sports, how is education being prioritized? And what is the message for it to families, students, and staff when significant staff cuts are planned in Tier Two and athletic cuts are not made until Tier Three? If the concern is to retain students, wouldn't, won't the staff cuts actually be a stronger deterrent for families considering leaving Waukesha? Thank you for your time and consideration." And the third comment is from Ann Aronworth of Ten Carley Circle in Rutland, Mass. She says, "Regional transportation for fiscal year 20 was funded at 84%, which is more than likely significantly higher than budgeted for. Have we seen any additional funds from this reimbursement? If so, are there plans to move it into a transportation fund to have it available first thing for fiscal year 21?" And that's a good segue, I suppose, into conversations we may have under Business and Finance. So thank you to that. Darrell, do you have any other comments to the comments? If not, we'll get back with these folks in writing. I will check my email later and see if we have anything for the last, the last public session. So unless anyone objects, I want to take the next item out of order, which is a report from Business and Finance, because our attorney is on the line, Attorney Bertullus, in case there are questions about, about this bus contract issue that was discussed under Business and Finance. And, and no offense, Joe, I want to pay you as little as I can. So let's, let's, let's move ahead to that conversation. So Mike, can you, you can of course turn this to Darrell or, or to Dan, but it's, it's your subcommittee report. So do you want to start us off?
Sure. No, thank you for that. So I think, you know, first to address the question that was sent in around a higher funding level. You know, I guess I'll, I'll say that generally speaking, yes, any excess transportation dollars that we recognize can be put into a transportation stabilization account and applied towards fiscal year 2021. So that's an important point. We will note that there's a couple of things that play into that. One is that while there was a higher percentage this year, there was also some giveback that needed to occur as a result of some miscalculation of, in previous years of ridership and qualifying ridership that resulted in some giveback of, of some of those transportation dollars, which, you know, I guess some might be experienced this year and, and you know, due to some clerical issues might, might happen next year. But that said, one of the things that, that I know that Dan has been, been working hard at is with respect to our transportation contracts for this year. Given that we haven't been using transportation since, I think it was May, March, excuse me, 13th or so. And understanding that there may be an opportunity to negotiate with, with the provider to have some, I think I've heard the DESI administrator refer to it as readiness funds in preparation for next fiscal year. So we haven't used the services this year. There may be some readiness funds that the DESI would allow for us to, to negotiate with the provider to, to prepare for, for next year. When this vote, I guess, it was presented to us in Business and Finance, I think that there was some question and eagerness to understand what principles were used to establish basically only a 25% reduction in, in what we would have paid anyway. I think that there is at least a sentiment in the absence of having that understanding that paying 75% of, of the total value of a service, having not received that service seems quite a bit high. And so we decided rather than to vote in Business Finance to ask the administration to bring some additional information in that regard forward to, to the full school committee and be prepared to have that conversation here.
So before we turn this over to the committee, Malaya had us come in the, in the line about the fact that clerical error that member Dennis mentioned wasn't ours. So this time, there was, that's a DESI clerical error that resulted in that, that change.
Right. And just to be clear, so, so there was, we receive payments on some schedule. One of the scheduled payments was set to be reduced by a certain amount based on miscalculations in previous in previous years. And we learned that that reduction simply wasn't made in the payment that was just received by the district and that and that they will intend to make that reduction next year. So I'll turn it over to Dan and to Darrell.
So thanks, Mike. So just to piggyback on those comments, the DESI sent out an advisory back on March 27. In essence, had made the recommendation that districts across the Commonwealth continue to work with with their vendors to continue to pay any contracted services, be they custodial services, be they food services or transportation services. And at the same time, to continue to make payments to out of district providers as well. The DESI convened a an online gathering in early April, asked that districts that had a common vendor pull together that they select from their group one or two spokespersons in that those individuals would go forward and negotiate a settlement with their bus provider. In this case here, I worked on a settlement with my colleague from the Shrewsbury Public Schools and we represented 13 districts here in central Mass that have a have a contract with AA Transportation. We discussed various options with AA. And again, the intent was to ensure that in this case here, AA Transportation, by paying them a sum of money, whatever that value was, that they would be ready and available to the district upon our return. Initially, that return was to be the first week in April that was postponed until May 4. And then subsequently, we're out for the balance of the of the year. I did follow up and had a conversation with Mr. Ron Ernandwine, who is the president of AA Transportation. And he, in essence, highlighted some of the other issues out there that are driving this. And he reminded us, it reminded me, and we talked about this, that for for districts that are to receive federal dollars, that as part of that receipt of dollars, that they would continue to pay pay their their providers, in this case, transportation, transportation providers. Mr. Ernandwine said that it's really not that easy when drilling down on on the numbers. I have a letter here and there's a sentence in the letter and he states, and I quote, as I previously indicated, by deducting fuel and other costs not incurred, and then in parenthesis, fuel at 7%, maintenance parts 3%, profit at 10%, and any other savings would be offset by the cost not included in home to school. I offered to settle at at 80%. We then went back and forth and we agreed upon approximately a 75% reimbursement for for the days out. The invoices that would be submitted would in essence read to the effect payment for insurance of bus transportation for for time not in session. The there are districts who have negotiated different settlements. Our settlement is one of the lower, not the lowest, but but one of the lower in this area here. So that's just kind of a quick overview. I know Attorney Bartoulis is here as well. And Attorney Bartoulis, if there's anything else that you want to add to this, feel free, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. So this is Joe Bartoulis here. Hopefully everybody can hear me okay. Yeah. So Dan kind of summarized it. So, you know, the the district's been apparently negotiating with AA Transportation. And you brokered this deal for the 75%. One of the issues that was raised is the chapter 41, section 56, and the ability to pay for services. Dan forwarded me a document from the association that represents bus companies throughout Massachusetts, and they're of the position that providing of services includes being ready to provide services and having a ready staff ready to to provide bus services. When and if the call came down three weeks ago, a month ago, that we need you ready for tomorrow or the day after tomorrow. And so they're quite comfortable that that falls within the purview of being able to provide services to the extent that that's a question. Now, as to whether or not the district believes that the 75% is a good amount, or whether the district wishes to ultimately settle with these folks, that's that's ultimately your decision. At the end of the day, AA Transportation, if they feel that they've been aggrieved here, the the likely recourse, if they take any recourse, again, I don't know, would be to bring a breach of contract claim. And the breach of contract claim would be for wanting to be paid the full daily rate for those amount of days. So it seems to me your exposure, right? If they did bring a suit would be among you'd have legal fees, of course, and you might even be saddled with their legal fees. But your exposure would be the full daily rate. And if you ultimately are determined to owe them nothing, right? On the other end of the extreme, you would not owe them any of this money. How a court would decide the case, I can't say. But those are kind of, that's the range of of your options. So Dan and his counterpart in Shrewsbury, Pat Fracollins, did in fact broker this deal for the 75%. So that's that's it really in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
All right. So Ben Mitchell had raised his virtual hand.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Joe, for the for the explanations. You know, Dan in business and finance, the request was, you know, you said you had done some due diligence and gone back and forth. And I think this letter is kind of what what you were referring to. One question would be is that can we have this entered into the public notes? Because, you know, I think it's key, a key piece of information that we started at 80%, then we went to 75%. Now, again, I think that's still very high. I think, you know, I my understanding is that when bus companies shut down in the summer, all the bus drivers go on unemployment, I'm assuming, until the fall, until the spring. So he doesn't pay the people full year round. Again, these are just what I've heard. In addition, my, I guess, the question I would have also is, you know, if we are a large part of that as salary. So I guess the question I have is, how do we judge how much was paid in unemployment during this term versus how much we have to pay? So as we start looking at these numbers, you know, I'm assuming he has to, just like we have to pay unemployment insurance for the amount of claims against the district, I'm assuming he has to do the same. And I guess the question is, is how do we involve that in the equation? Because at the end of the day, you know, it's it's we want to make sure that he he stays whole. We want to, you know, we're paying for services that are not rendered. But in with the intent to keep him whole, I, you know, that's where my my, it just didn't feel right with the information we had at business finance. It feels a little better, but it's, you know, it's a very complicated process. I just feel like there are still a few more pieces that are missing.
AA Transportation did lay off their his staff back in March. As part of this, these discussions and these negotiations, he agreed to reinstate all his staff. And he agreed to also pay them during the summer months at a time, as you know, it had been when they would be unemployed so that they would be made whole.
Would it be appropriate for me to step in now? Joe here again?
Sure.
Okay. So just anecdotally, and I don't want to put people to sleep, but when sometimes people talk about like unemployment and the mechanics of this. So you really have, when a when a person's unemployed, they have been laid off, right? There's no assurance of continued employment. Conversely, when a person is furloughed, his or her employment is continued to resume when they get recalled back to work. It's a distinction, but it's a distinction without a difference as it relates to unemployment because a person who's been on furlough, as I expect that these drivers are, and those all the employees who work for the bus company to the extent that they've been furloughed, they're receiving their full suite of unemployment benefits currently, I'm presuming, which would mean the regular unemployment from the state of Mass, whatever their specific amount would be, as well as presumably the federal $600 supplement. So then it begs the question query whether or not when you add those two sums together, whether these people are actually receiving the equal or greater amount, right? Than they would if they were actually driving. So then it begs the question, and I think it's an obvious one. When he says make them whole, are they not already being made whole now, right? That that seems to be one of the questions. And I think it's worth exploring with the with the fellow from AA. Now, to the extent that he says he'll pay for their busing, their their rates over the summer, well, to the extent that they would otherwise be unemployed over the summer, and they're already being made whole now, right? What's there to necessarily make them whole for over the summer? They're already going to be collecting unemployment. So all this is just food for thought to keep in there. You've got these dynamics in play. I don't know. We could kind of massage the language as may be needed. But to the extent that these folks are already receiving unemployment, and I don't know what part of the total operating cost or what part of the monies that they receive from you guys goes into the line item of their wages. I don't know where that would come into the mix. But clearly, it seems to me at a minimum that those costs are likely already being defrayed by way of unemployment. Now, there is an experience rating, which is getting into the weeds now, similar to the experience rating you would have with your car insurance, that if you have a lot of claims, you do have an experience rating. I don't know what impact this will or will not have on their experience rating. That's something that, you know, is beyond our conversation. But that seems to me to be a smaller number than the grand, the grand amount there. So I don't know.
So I remember along Valleal, then, sorry, and then Young, and then Dennis and Joe. I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Are you going to say something else?
No, no, no. Thank you.
So Linda.
Okay. Now, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So I just wanted to point out that a concern I had raised at the last school committee meeting and in business finance was that it was not clear whether AA Transportation had applied for the the federal funding available to businesses under 500 employees and the CARES Act. And in his, in the contract, they notify us that they have, in fact, they have, in fact, applied for that funding and that they will reimburse us. Let me see if I can find the exact language. Where did it go? In section seven of the contract, they note that AA Transportation Company Incorporated will notify the district upon receipt of notification of forgiveness of any portion of said CARES Act loan or receipt of any other similar stimulus grants if that's received by AA Transportation in combination with the payments agreed upon in paragraph five. Let's see, basically, they'll, it will return any overpayments to us is the bottom line. So if if they get money under the CARES Act, they'll pay us back under a formula that they that is included in the contract. So I just wanted to, as a point of information, I just wanted people to be aware of that.
Okay, member Young.
Yeah. A comment that I was going to make before, and you know, Attorney really kind of hit it home there is, Joe, what will actually happen to the bus drivers if we go back and pay them the pay that this is talking about? Quote, make them whole. Because if we do that, then they will have to go and pay back the unemployment, which is money they may have already spent. And if that money's higher than what we're going to suddenly we're taking money out of their pockets.
So that question's out into the ether. I'm not the one who answered it. Does anybody have any input to that?
So Ken, in our discussions, what Mr. Ernandwine had stated is that from a certain date and moving forward, he would reinstate his staff, he would continue to pay his staff. And as part of the the overpayment, again, this is what he presented, that he would then pay through the the summer months or a portion of the summer as well.
All right, member Dennis. I'm sorry, Adam, do you have a?
So so what I'm hearing is that people have been on unemployment since March 17th, give or take, and been earning that money, and then we'll pay them from the date this is moving forward through the summer so that it covers the amount they would have made from March 17th till the, you know, last year's school. So in essence, you're paying them extra. So we're paying extra so that they can pay extra. It it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense.
All right. So member Dennis, the member Ember.
Thank you. So two points, you know, one, there was a reference made to, you know, federal transportation reimbursement dollars, I think it was for for next year and and the impact of that. And, you know, let's just be clear. You know, any transportation dollars that we have in that we've received, that we don't spend, we keep 100% of that or can keep 100% of that into a stabilization account to be used towards offsetting what we expect to be a series of very severe reductions for next year. That's point number one versus, you know, we we pay out some number of transportation dollars and hope that we get some percentage of it back next year through transportation reimbursement. To me, it's a farcical comparison. The second point is is one that, you know, I think Adam was was going to as well. You know, again, we were looking at the principle of, you know, what, you know, is there some aspect of fixed cost that we could understand from our transportation provider that might be appropriate in discussing in terms of of paying some number of dollars for services that weren't used in readiness for next year. And, you know, some people would call that a bailout. I'll remind our committee that we just voted on in totality, a resolution for federal bailout for ourselves. I'm not sure that what this level, it seems to me that this, we don't have the clarity into the principle of how this helps our transportation provider. I think that there's probably some appetite to help them at some level. But if we're talking about going back and making their people whole that have been laid off since March, who quite frankly, might be doing better with the economic stimulus they're receiving through unemployment measures. This doesn't seem to me that to feel like the right level. I haven't heard the principle in terms of of how this applies to their fixed costs to to get them ready for next year. It just, it seems like an overshot to me.
Okay, member Ember.
Well, I guess I would just second member Dennis's comments. And again, I'm incredibly confused about the fact that we would be that they'd be paid through the summer when they're not traditionally paid through the summer. And you know, I guess, for me, it just doesn't pass the smell test. I mean, it just looks like an awful agreement and seems ridiculous. So I need a lot more convincing to vote on something like that. It's I think there needs to be much more substantiation of 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 costs and hurt and really trying to understand that. Thank you.
Member Gustafson.
So I guess one of my questions is that if I recall,
So I guess one of my questions is that if I recall, this has been agreed to by, well, this has been presented to at least to 13 districts. So I'm curious about the process then. If we do not pass it, have the other districts all passed it? Do we have to go back and then re-present it to all of them if it was on behalf of 13 districts? Um, so I wanted to get some insight into that process.
So Mr. Collins and I negotiated uh, the settlement on behalf of 13 districts. But once we brought forward the terms of the amendment to the contract, um, each district then brought it forward to their respective uh, school committee and or finance subcommittee, who in turn would then bring it forward to the respective town accountant, um, and town manager. Um, of those districts, there are approximately four that, um, if you will, signed, sealed and and delivered. Um, if, um, if the committee chooses not to um, support this agreement, um, then it has no impact um, on the other um, 12 districts uh, that are in in process. Um, this agreement again, in 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 going back to to the purpose of the advisory uh, was to ensure that contractors, whomever they be, in this case, transportation, would be there for the district um, upon their return um, to school. Again, that was going to be early April, pushed back to early May, and now for the balance of the year. Um, so hopefully that answers your question, Malaya.
Um, it answered one part and a related one is that um, so we don't know what the other districts that have not signed it yet, what their concerns are, or if perhaps they have similar common concerns that then might help um, bolster our discussion perhaps with AA. Um, and also my related question is, this is through this closure, but what happens if we have to close again in say September? Do we need to renegotiate this each closure or is it something that will be extended?
So to to the second question, um, yes, um, if there was a a a second closure, um, I'm gonna take a leap of faith here and and say that uh, um, in terms of transportation or any other contract, that we would uh, look to to renegotiate uh, for the, for the terms of, for the, for the length of that closure. And in terms of the other districts, um, again, um, to my knowledge, uh, there, there are no issues. Um, they are simply in process, um, that's all. Um, I am aware that um, um, yeah, some of the other districts were not signed, sealed and delivered, but uh, it has been endorsed um, by respective school committees and by town accountants and 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 town administrators.
I, I would suspect that perhaps on a limb that we are the largest of all of these 13 districts, so we probably have the most funds at stake in this. So um, that may be why we're, we're looking at it probably more closely, but I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Actually, uh, Shoesbury um, is a, is a pretty close second. Um, Shoesbury has uh, um, they may have, you know, either one bus more than us or one bus less than us, but we're, we're, we're one and two or two and one, um, hand in hand.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So I have member Weeks, then member Atmar, and perhaps we can wrap up this discussion.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to extend it any longer, but it just seems to me, and I just like member Ember said, it just smells like a bad deal. And I think when you have a bad deal on the table, and to member Gustafson's point as well, this is our precedent, right? It's not gonna get any better than this. If we go back to negotiate with them next year and we're closed for three, four months again, it's not like they're really, oh, you know, now, now you only have to pay 65%. You know, it's never gonna get better than that 75%, and perhaps they would want more at that point. Um, so I know everyone's doing the best they can, and I know the negotiations have not been easy, but I would just like to also offer just kind of my dismay, you know, thinking about 50 kids in a K through eight class and then just kind of giving money away to the bus company because they asked for it.
And Rotmar.
Yeah, just uh, one last thing, hopefully. Um, one thing that came up at Business and Finance as well, that Director Didi had mentioned, and I don't know if he just has kind of more numbers on this, but when we were bandying this around, um, one of the things that he was mentioned was that at least, he had mentioned at least one of his colleagues, business directors, um, was choosing not to pay anything at all, that just not gonna do, not paying anything at all to their bus companies. So I don't know, um, if we have a better sense of kind of region or even across the state, what districts are doing. Um, certainly the, there's a, we've got the cohort that he worked with as part of this, and that's kind of a bit of a regional piece, but um, I, I certainly would like at least kind of see what other folks are doing across the state. Because if, if there are a lot of other districts across the state, a lot of that are saying the same thing as at least the one other district that he had mentioned that's saying like, we're not paying because they're not driving buses, um, then that, I mean, that paints a, it's, I mean, it's kind of a broad picture and it's kind of a mess, uh, kind of across the state, but that would be um, good information to have. Or if, even if it's that first district that said, no, we're not getting paid, if they've already got a court date set up because they, the bus company suing them, then that's uh, kind of useful information as well. Uh, but that's, I just wanted to add to that, just that it hadn't been mentioned that there are other districts that aren't doing any, that are choosing not to pay. So just to put that out there as well.
So there, there, there is that, that one district, um, I'm, I'm not aware of across the state of um, um, any other district that this district is not paying. Um, I am aware, um, across the state um, of many other districts that are paying higher rates, um, 78, 80, 85. Um, it's kind of all over the place. Um, and uh, and and the, the payments is the result of negotiations, good faith negotiations uh, with with their bus provider, um, on the pre-intense that uh, uh, they would be there to serve and support the district uh, when they returned. Again, it's supposed to be in April, then May, and hopefully in August.
All right, so uh, I thank Dan for his uh, for his work. I think in terms of process, you know, is as has been discussed a bit tonight, that, um, you know, timelines are tight. Um, so perhaps we can continue this conversation in Business and Finance and um, and bring these motions back, perhaps on a different, slightly different contract at our next um, at our next meeting. Um, so Mike, while we're still in this, is there anything else from Business and Finance?
Um, no, I guess the one other, one clarification that I'd make from something I heard earlier today. Um, I think one of the members, I forget who it was, referenced a $900,000 um, uh, projected um, balance. And I don't think that's completely correct. I think the, the latest numbers was uh, about $600,000. Um, but I think the point was made that um, uh, you know, a lot of that is, is as a result of um, just, you know, moving to uh, um, as, as many districts have and as many districts are experiencing, uh, moving to a remote learning um, environment. Um, uh, and and, you know, that does afford the opportunity to carry forward some number of dollars from this year to next year. Um, and I think those have been outlined uh, in in the document that we reviewed earlier today.
All right, thank you. So I'm gonna bring us back to the uh, to the agenda. So next on the agenda is item five, unfinished business. We don't formally have any. Next on the agenda is the secretary's report. Um, I'm gonna pass over item A, although Madam Secretary, we need to figure out a way. Maybe we can talk about best practices to get executive session minutes out to members so that we can get these approved. I'll pass over A for the moment and take a motion under B to approve the 1343 regular meeting minutes the Wachuson Regional School District Committee held on May 11th, 2020 and enclose in the call to meeting.
So moved. Second.
So Weeks moved, Long Belial seconded. Um, thank you so much, Rebecca. Again, these are such difficult minutes to take when we're in this, this um, environment. People have questions, corrections on the minutes? Uh, seeing none, I will take a roll call vote um, to approve them. I know some people have left the meeting. Uh, member Ayala.
Ayala, yes.
Uh, member Brown.
Brown, yes.
Uh, member Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Uh, member Godbout. Uh, he says yes. Uh, member Gustafson, I think she's off the meeting technical issue. Um, member Haber.
Haber, yes.
Uh, member Haynes.
Yes.
Member Ember.
Ember, yes.
Uh, member Christian Baum.
Christian Baum, yes.
Uh, member Long Belial.
Yes.
Member Mitchellowski.
Yes.
Uh, Mills, yes, Gustafson.
Yes.
Uh, Mitchell, I think Ben left the meeting. Atmar.
Atmar, yes.
Uh, Silva.
Yes.
Smith. Uh, I think Christina left the meeting. Um, Weeks.
Yes.
Uh, Woodland.
Yes.
And Young.
Yes.
All right, so that passes. Um, okay. The next on the agenda is the treasurer's reports and financial statements. So if you have a question about those, please direct them to Mr. Didi or subcommittee chair. Um, Dennis, next on the agenda is management. Um, so management did meet. Um, we talked about um, the motion we did, we passed earlier today. We also talked about process in terms of um, really everything, um, forming the committee for the reopening, how we were gonna process through budget. Um, and how we were gonna contingency plan around negotiations with unions. So we did just have some executive session to talk about um, bargaining strategies. Any questions about management? Uh, seeing none, education, member Ember.
Uh, we met this evening. Um, we spent a fair amount of time discussing uh, class size implications of a 1/12 budget. Um, also instructional implications in the textbook plan and how that was being affected um, as well as uh, money that got frozen uh, back in February and March. Uh, and we just started to touch on survey results. We're gonna meet again in two weeks.
All right, thank you, member Ember, for for having a host of those important conversations um, about how the budget's gonna affect the curriculum. It's an important part of the school committee's responsibility. Uh, does anybody have any questions for, um, for member Ember?
Hey Ken, this is Mike. Um, I do have a quick question. So, you know, there was a question, I think, that came into us through public session um, regarding uh, some of the survey feedback. And um, so, you know, it sounds like it was discussed that education be interested in hearing um, how that was synthesized. But, you know, I put my own snip to it too. In particular, you know, I think we had a readout last time on, on the general, very high level questions that that went out across the district at our last school, school committee meeting. Um, did you folks have the opportunity to discuss some of the more granular uh, question there that went out on a school by school level? And if so, could you share any of the, um, of, uh, what came in on that question?
Right, so, so the short answer, Mike, is no, we're, we're getting there and, and, you know, we wanna get into a deeper conversation. We just touched on the survey uh, ever so slightly, but it'll be at the top of the agenda for our next meeting. And, and we also had a number of questions that, you know, specifically how it'll also relate to professional development because, you know, clearly faculty are feeling the need to um, be supported in, in um, in their efforts.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, I would, um, at least that's the case and, um, you know, we'll look forward to hearing more from you guys as you synthesize to that. Thanks.
Okay, sure, thanks.
All right, member Gustafson, you had a question for education.
It's related to the surveys also. Um, I know when those first were presented to us, um, there was discussion of a second survey going out at some point in time, and a couple of people have asked me about that. I know that we have much more pressing matters in front of us right now, but I did wanna relay the question. Um, you know, it is getting late in the year, but some people were under the impression a second survey was coming to compare data as we got deeper into this new phase. Um, so I was just asking about that.
Sure, I don't know if uh, either Daryl or Bob Burlow wanna respond to that.
Sure, I'll, I'll respond, Bob. Um, you know, I, I think, Malaya, you said it well. I think there are some other pressing matters right now that we're attempting to deal with. Um, we would like to be able to do that, but as we're, we're looking at wrapping the year up um, pretty quickly. Um, you know, again, you know, I wanna ensure that we are doing our due diligence in terms of planning out um, what we need to look for for next year as well as kind of wrapping up this year in terms of the budget and so forth. So um, I don't think that's gonna be.
So if people do have, so if people do have a situation where, it's been explained to me that some people would have responded differently now that we're into a different model than we were at the time when that survey went out. And so I guess my question is, if you're thinking ahead and they have different things to report than they did when they did the survey, how can they get that information to you all to be, in a way that would be useful?
Well, I guess one of the things we could do, Malaya, is uh, again, reach out to families, you know, what we, what we need to do is focus on getting this other part done uh, in reference to the budget. But what we could do is look at, yeah, look at the end of the year. Um, so after we, uh, you know, make some decisions about what we need to do and some of these items that we talked about this evening.
Yep.
Uh, we could send something out, even if it happens over the summer, you know, we still have all the information that, um, that, you know, in terms of reaching people.
Okay, I appreciate that. As I said, I was just uh, forwarding the question that was related. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, member Woodland, you had a question or for education?
Um, I, I do, but actually that was basically my question. I just wanna reiterate the need to have some kind of um, way for parents to get feedback, even if it's over the summer or something. We need some, some kind of mechanism to see how, um, you know, the difference between when that first survey went out and by the end of the year, I think that you'll find, um, and and maybe not, but we need to ask the question to know what the uh, feedback is from the parents, what's actually feasible by households for remote learning. Because um, I think the questions asked in the first place might not relay that very well. And not only that, people would have different answers at this point. So just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Uh, member Dennis.
Thank you. Just to come back to that, I mean, I think it's more likely than not, uh, which is probably an understatement, that there's gonna be some form of remote learning next year. Um, we don't know how pervasive that's going to be, but I think budding person would probably um, bet that way. And so whether it's just by making an option available, or whether it's the situation that we happen to be in for some population of students. Um, and, and so to me, um, when we say that there are other things that we're, we're concerned about, um, I would suggest that simply going in to next year, if we're going into a remote learning situation, the way that we're doing it now is is probably not meeting the muster. Um, I think that there absolutely needs to be a process as part of our reopening plan that we've been talking about forming committee to start thinking about how we're doing this, the 26th day of May uh, for next year, that um, uh, that, that process of of understanding what's working well, what's not working well, retrospection and adaptation um, absolutely needs to be baked into this plan. And so I, I don't think that we can understate that uh, enough.
Member Smith.
I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's before you couldn't hear me. I was like, I'm going in. I just wanted to uh, agree with member Dennis. I think that this, I mean, this, the remote learning is a very important component of what maybe we may be facing going forward. I think we're all probably thinking it is something that's going to be part of our, our children's lives and our, and the lives of the childrens in our district. And I think when the DESE guidance comes out in a couple of weeks and that advisory committee is underway, that would maybe be a good time to take a look at remote learning. At that point, we would also be at the end of the remote learning for this year and um, people will have that totality of experience. But I, I do agree with member Dennis that it's an important part of what we are doing right now and what we will be doing in the future, and we definitely need to take a look at it. And it's not something we wanna put on the back burner, but as far as do we need to do this tomorrow? No. I think we can wait until we get some of that guidance so we can see how it matches with the um, plans that we'll be putting forth. Thank you.
Okay, I would just add that, you know, data collection is often time consuming. In this case, I think data collection will be less time consuming than data analysis. So if the data collection could perhaps be a low cost input now, then when there's time to analyze the data, at least you have the data and you're not trying to then when there's time to analyze the data, at least you have the data and you're not trying to fish after people way downstream. Um, are there other questions, member Imber? Alright, hearing none. The next item of the agenda is Business of Finance. I think we've talked about that, uh, a lot. Mike, anything else? Are we good?
I think we covered it, thanks.
Uh, next item is Legal Affairs. Scott?
Yeah, we have not met as a Subcommittee, uh, since our last meeting. But I did meet with, um, the administration with the PEC, uh, last Monday, uh, to go over options that would, uh, maybe save the district some money. Uh, and we do, um, have a meeting tomorrow, uh, with the WRAA impact bargaining. That's it.
Questions for Legal? Seeing none, the next item is the Superintendent Goals and Evaluation Summit Committee. Member Lavoy had to leave for another meeting, but he did note that the, uh, the report was in the Superintendent's Report, um, from, from him, I think, a, a good thorough way. Member Mitchell Alaski, you're the Vice Chair, do you have anything to, to add?
Uh, no, just, uh, uh, hope that everyone pays careful attention to the dates and really, um, you know, is prepared to do fairly quick turnaround on the evaluation document. We did, uh, push it as far as we could to give, um, Dr. McCall enough time or adequate amount of time as we could to pull his evidence together. We'll talk more about it at our meeting on the 8th. I think that's the plan to present, um, the evaluation process to them.
Okay. Questions? Uh, seeing none, Facilities and Security, Adam?
Uh, we haven't met since our last full meeting.
Okay. Audit Advisory, I don't think Ben is on the meeting at the moment. Uh, Daryl, Dan, we have anything from Audit Advisory? Daryl's shaking his head, no. These are, those are the kind of like subtle things, and I know they won't fall between the cracks, so we do have to keep our attention to, you know, to, to that, to that committee. Our next item of the agenda is Ad hoc Subcommittees. Ad hoc Subcommittee negotiates the Superintendent's Contract. We did have an executive session last time where we voted on a proposal. Um, I don't have a signed version of that back as yet, so that's still ongoing. Um, the Subcommittee may meet, uh, uh, in the upcoming future. Building Committees, there aren't any. School Council Reports, I'll start since I'm talking. Davis Hill met for our second time remotely, so, uh, Principal Norton's done a very good job in, um, in keeping the School Council informed of the goings-on and the impact of COVID and pending budget issues on, um, on that. He'll be continuing to work on his School Improvement Plan, of course. It's, uh, challenging to be writing these, as I'm sure Daryl knows, in an environment where we don't know what our resources or what our schools will look like. Um, but, but kudos to Jay for, um, for keeping us in, um, uh, engaged as a SIMCO and meeting, of course, also our statutory obligation to do so. I saw that Malaya had her hand up for a Council Report.
Yep, um, I just have a couple things, a couple of things to report for the CPAC, um, just so people are aware. Um, they had a concern, uh, which I sort of touched on earlier, um, with the ESY, but they're, they had a question about summer school staffing, and they went to the website to see if the job was posted and did not see it. Um, I did ask Jeff this question earlier, and he indicated it's an internal posting. So I don't know what that means, but they had, if, if, I know it's open to internal candidates, but I don't know if it still needs to then be posted on the website publicly, but they had a question about that, because they went looking for it and couldn't find it. So I'm relaying that question. I know in typical times, it does get posted on the bulletin board, even if it's an internal staff posting. So I, I didn't know if that was a legal requirement or where that falls, but I was relaying the question. Um, and then I had two, um, event procedural updates, that they are, uh, working on a virtual Wind Beneath Your Wings recognition event of some sort, not really event, but a way of doing it online. Um, I don't know the details of that yet, but they are working on at least some way to recognize, allow families to recognize people as they do every spring. And they are also working on their end-of-year survey, which should be coming out shortly as they finalize the questions. Um, they do do a CPAC end-of-year survey of families affected by special education or of students in special education in the district every year. So, uh, if you have students, anyone's watching, and you have students in special education, be on the lookout for that coming up soon.
Alright, I'm excited to see that there's a lot more, um, reports on the list, so I'll turn to member Young.
Thanks. Um, so we met, I believe it was last week for Mayo, and, the, sorry, so we went over several things. Um, they did a parent survey within the school, and in general, parents were very happy with the way education was going in the, in Mayo. It seemed to parallel the overview of the parent survey we got last week. Uh, it seemed to be equal amounts wanted more work and less work, but the majority was happy with, uh, the current level. The teachers did bring up that they had a very steep learning curve, but they're, they're really taking it on and trying to do the best they can, and they're really excelling at it. You know, they're, within Mayo, they are doing a lot of outreach to, um, to get families included. They're talking about a virtual field day. Um, they're trying to set up a family game night. You know, including, um, you know, some teachers and administration bringing their parents in for like a Family Feud, uh, things like that. Reading nights, which they've actually been doing online for several years, uh, since Mrs. Garden has gotten there. Um, and also, they're also planning with, um, you know, Dawson and Davis Hill to look at, um, kindergarten orientation and also moving up to Mount View. They're trying to figure out, you know, is it possible to do a virtual visit to Mount View for those fifth graders that'll be moving up, you know, and a lot of other end-of-year things that they're looking at. Um, one of the issues that was brought up, um, is that the kindergarten registration deadline, there isn't one. Every other year, there usually is one. Um, and with no deadline, they're having issues getting good numbers on what to expect next year for kindergarten coming in. Um, and also, it was brought up that enrollment may change significantly because, there are already hearing of some people that are in private school, you know, in kindergarten, maybe looking to go to Mayo now, um, that they weren't planning on. Um, and also students that are in Mayo now may be looking to homeschool next year. So it's, there's a lot that's up in the air as we look into next year, and it's other things that, just as a committee, we need to consider. Um, and as a final note, um, you know, Patty Hurley, who's been the Assistant Principal there while my daughter was in school, she's been in this district a long time, and she is retiring at the end of this year. So I know I'll be sad to see her go. I know many other people will. And, but they have done a virtual Assistant Principal search, and as of the meeting we had last week, uh, they were down to two finalists. So, that's it.
Alright, and just briefly, Daryl, the, um, the, just so it doesn't linger out there, the deadline for kindergarten, is there, is there something to talk about next meeting, or?
Uh, yeah, and I, again, um, you know, we're, the way we're looking at this, because there is, um, all of this kind of unrest going on, we want us to keep it open, uh, right now, uh, because again, it, you know, we're not able to communicate in the same way. Um, so yeah, we're, we're leaving it open. Um, you know, I think some principals, uh, really want to kind of know a little bit more, but, um, you know, we're, we're, we're still trying to give as much flexibility to families as possible right now.
Just to follow up, the impression I got was that it was, they, they definitely understood why. It just, those are the issues that arise because of it in planning. But it was, it was understood why, so, thanks.
Alright, uh, so our next, uh, our next one is, uh, member Woodland from Choxit.
Um, so we met with Choxit, uh, SIMCO last week, um, and most of what we talked about were, uh, the, uh, how remote learning was going from, uh, the teacher's side. Uh, the main thing that was brought up was just the amount of feedback they would be getting back from students, that parents might be feeling satisfied, but teachers weren't necessarily getting the same back and forth that, you know, they wanted the teaching to have. And so that was a big part of the, the conversation. We also talked about, um, their, uh, Professional Development Day, where they were, began to work on looking at standards from the, uh, from one grade, and then how it overlaps with the beginning of the next grade, um, to look at lining up those, uh, those standards. Um, and then also talked about writing the School Improvement Plan, um, with making a, uh, SEL Advisory Program and then working on a couple other assessments, um, where the plan had to be kind of, uh, retooled a little bit to both plan for what is, would regularly happen, but then also be still flexible for whatever may happen. And, uh, and then tomorrow, uh, the ECC, uh, SIMCO will meet. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Um, member Long Belial?
Um, the high school SIMCO met today, and we finalized our three, uh, goals for the, uh, School Improvement Plan, and, uh, those included a goal to try to foster learning among all learners, and I think the, the primary intent behind that was to, to try to place a stronger emphasis on the needs of students who perhaps, uh, may not be college-bound, but may, who, who may want to, uh, move into some sort of trade or other kind of job directly from high school. We talked about the fact that it's very, excuse me, unfortunate that, um, that, uh, budget cuts mean that, um, that the staffing plan that we put together, which would have included a, the hiring of a, sort of a school-to-career kind, uh, kind of, person who would coordinate those kinds of transitions, uh, not this coming year, but the year after, uh, that, that might, all these budget issues might, um, make that impossible or very difficult. Um, and that's very unfortunate. Another goal was an emphasis on social-emotional learning, and we talked about the fact that there is, that, uh, kids coming back after all this are going to have a lot of, um, additional social-emotional needs that, uh, we will have to really, uh, work hard to address. So those were the two, those are the two main items that we discussed as part of our School Improvement Plan.
Alright, thank you, member Haynes for Central Tree.
Thank you. Uh, we talked, uh, talked about a few different things. One was, uh, what was the importance of the feedback from, uh, parent-to-teacher in terms of how students are, are doing, good, bad, different, our assignments getting hit or missed. And then, of course, overall performance. Uh, the new format of, uh, remote learning obviously has a lot of kinks for us to work out, and, and as we go through different pieces, that was one that was, we're, we're looking at to address, just to make sure that, um, you know, that if there was an issue, most important if there's an issue, but even if there was good feedback, uh, just to try to make sure that we can create that pathway from, uh, parents and teachers. And related to that, uh, David had said that, for some of the students where he felt like they were maybe, um, not participating or it looked like there might have been an issue, I mean, he's, he's been reaching out, uh, going to some homes if, if need be, to try to figure out what, you know, what they can do to make sure those kids are, are brought in and, uh, you know, made part of, made part of the connection. Uh, and there were some other, uh, interesting ideas that were, um, you know, put out, uh, at toward the end of the meeting. Uh, one was, um, uh, there was discussion about the importance, uh, and this, I think Linda mentioned this a second ago, but the importance of the transition from, uh, this year to next. And some of the keywords were, you know, not just, you know, things that were introduced or things that were mastered, but even things that were, you know, qualified as exposure to a given topic academically. And the, the transition from grade to grade, and specifically from like, from five to six, right? And from eight to nine, all those transitions are really going to be critical. And there might even be like a, you know, might, might even be like an assessment piece early on, uh, in the new year, just to kind of figure out where, where kids are at. And then the other idea that was, uh, put out was, um, if, if we, as a committee, uh, down the road, could potentially look at the school calendar for next year. Um, and the idea is, is that, um, you know, as kids and parents are trying to figure out how to do remote learning, uh, so are teachers. And, and the idea was that maybe some of the, uh, professional development days could be front-loaded, uh, you know, put towards the front of the year, so that, uh, there could be some time invested early on in the year for the teachers to get familiar with some of the online, uh, learning, the face-to-face time, like what we were talking about earlier, just the importance of that, the ability, even if it's through the computer, the importance of the kids to be able to see the teacher, vice versa, the other kids. And, and the thought was, is that if maybe some of the PD days could be moved up, uh, to the front of the year, that might, that might make it easier for, for some of the staff. That's it.
Alright, alright, thank you. That last thing is something that committee could take up, would have to be bargained, um, of course, and the School Committee would have to vote on it as well. The next, uh, person is member, uh, Haber, but she said that Jeff was doing the, share, is there anything to add for Central Tree?
No, I think you covered everything.
Alright, great, thank you. Uh, Melissa for Houghton?
Yep, alright, so, uh, Principal Cipro went over the survey he had sent out on remote learning. He went over the numbers, basically, on, uh, let's see, on time spent, what is working well, challenges, suggestions. It was like forty-nine, forty-nine percent were, were using the, um, sorry, excuse me, it's getting late. Uh, forty-nine percent used the one-to-hour window of remote learning, and thirty-three percent were two to three hours of learning, um, and so on. So he went over those details. Uh, the other things he went, he talked about was, um, having contact with families who may have, have a little less participation than others with home learning, so he's been reaching out to those families. He also talked about, the group talked about having, um, doing something for the fourth graders, kind of similar to what, um, others have said. Uh, fourth graders going on to, to middle school, um, doing something once the fall comes to have that, to be able to go into the next grade and, and have some closure with even one school going to the other. I think that was about it, what we covered.
Alright, thank you, member Christian Baum?
Yeah, hi, I reported on the, um, the SIMCO, uh, meeting that happened in our last meeting, so I'll just, uh, mention that we have another, uh, Dawson is having their, uh, next meeting on June 3rd, and we are going over the survey results, so I'll have more to add next time. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Um, so next item of the agenda is Public Hearing. I don't have any more emails, so is there any members of the public who are actually on the meeting who should address the committee? Um, seeing none, the next item of the agenda is New Business. Again, not to discuss tonight. So is there any new business to put on the table? Uh, seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, we'll do it alphabetically. Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Uh, member Brown is not on the meeting. Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Uh, Godbout is not on the meeting. Uh, Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Imber?
Imber, yes.
Christian Baum?
Christian Baum, yes.
Uh, Long Belial?
Yes.
Mitchell Alaski? Amy might have left. Um, yes, Amy is off the meeting. Mills, yes. Chill is off the meeting. Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Uh, Silva?
Yes.
Uh, Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Uh, Woodland?
Yes.
And Young?
Yes.
Alright, so we adjourned. Thanks to everyone. Thanks for HCTV for broadcasting tonight, and, uh, Alright, so we adjourned. Thanks to everyone. Thanks for HCTV for broadcasting tonight and, uh, and we will, uh, see you soon. Thank you.